Well, the October 25th, 2022 work session. Agenda items and agenda. If there's anybody who has anything to comment about the agenda. We'll say that our meals are going to lie between 5:00 and 5:15. That range, she's just going to be. Dinner time. Thank you very much. This agenda item is going to be Lieber Project Alternative. Lisa, you're going to start it off for us?
I sure am.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We're looking forward to the next few hours and discussing the long-term options for the Lieber Canal. I'm Lisa Gruntz, Generation Manager. As for tonight's agenda, I'll be giving just a very brief intro, about five minutes or so. The rest of Tony is then yours for discussion and questions. Joining me at the table this evening is Mark Zinnaker, our Generation Engineering Supervisor, Jeremy Simoji, our Lieber Strategic Evaluation Project Manager, and Alicia Voorheem, our Financial Analyst. We also have additional subject matter experts in the audience. So hopefully, between all of us, we should be able to answer most of your questions. With that, I'll share just a few slides to set the stage for this evening. Holly, if you can move to the next slide, please. All right, so over the last year, we've been collecting information for a triple bottom line analysis that aims to characterize the social, environmental, and economic impacts of four alternatives for the Lieber Canal. Preliminary results were provided to the board in a lengthy memo a few weeks ago at the regular October Board Session. As a quick reminder, now I'll just show the high-level issues that were identified in each of the TBL categories. Next slide, please, Holly. The social category is the TBL aspect with the largest number of issues, or attributes, as we call them. We initially developed this list with help from our consultants, subject matter experts, and staff. Then we launched an extensive public outreach effort during which we received more than 400 comments. That effort allowed us to confirm that we weren't missing any of the substantial social impact issues in our analysis. A detailed report of those results will be provided to the board in the coming weeks. Next slide, please, Holly. We also identified a range of environmental issues that also have been vetted with subject matter experts and staff. They're shown here on this slide. And finally. Next slide, please, Holly. The financial and economic issues that have been in the triple bottom line analysis. We went to each attribute and assigned it a relative score for each alternative based on whether the impact was negative, neutral, or positive as compared to current conditions. We developed a scoring based on, again, professional opinion from subject matter experts, staff, and consultants. Scoring is color-coded on the table in this slide, so you can easily see positive versus negative impacts. Yellow, orange, and red, and brown are negative, with yellow being a minor negative impact and red being a major negative impact. Green and blue are positive impacts, with green being minorly positive and blue being majorly positive. As you can see, there are both negative and positive impacts for each alternative. It really comes down to the trade-offs. Next slide, please. To better understand how the board may view the trade-offs, we recently asked Commissioners to individually weigh the attributes within each category, so essentially assigning a relative level of importance to the attributes in making this decision. Shown here are the combined scores for all Commissioners. All alternatives have a total score that is negative, which means that overall, all alternatives have a net negative outcome according to how the board weighted the attributes. So in other words, again, the decision comes down to choosing the least negative and recognizing that there are trade-offs. Now, please note that due to our mandate from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, doing nothing is not an option. When Commissioner's scores were added together, the stormwater conveyance option comes in with the least negative number, followed by the partial return to service that involves building a new power plant near the Lufman spillway. Next slide, please, Holly. This graphic shows how each Commissioner's weights were divided amongst the three major TBL categories: social, environmental, and economic. There's both consistency and diversity in the weighting. For example, all Commissioners rated the social aspect as relatively high. There's also consistency amongst four Commissioners on the relative weight of economics. Some divergent perspectives emerged as well. For example, the Commissioner shown in gray rated environmental and social concerns higher than economics, and the Commissioner shown in orange rated social issues as considerably higher than the other two categories. Slide, please, Holly. Finally, I'd like to present some preliminary rate impacts for each alternative. Now, it's no surprise that there will be a rate impact regardless of which option is chosen. Alternatives three and four, the partial return to service and the stormwater conveyance options, have a rate impact of about 10% to 10.5%. Full decommissioning is roughly a 14% impact, and a full return to service is roughly a 15% impact. Now, there are a lot of assumptions that went into these calculations, so these are just estimates and they're subject to change, but it does give you a relative sense of scope in terms of customer rates. Slide, please, Holly. That's all we have for formal slides. Wanted to leave most of the time for you. We do have several reference slides that are loaded that we can pull up later on if needed. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Commissioners, for your discussion.
Thank you very much. So, format. We haven't talked about it, but I presume the consensus is that we just want to have a free-flowing discussion. If we have questions, we can either question each other. That way, if we agree or disagree, that's okay. But we're experts here, the staff, and just when it's time to get it out on the table. So from there, I want everybody to be respectful until there's time. We've got four hours. That's a ton of time. But we also have a lot of heavy lifting. So just starting this out, if anybody wants to just talk about the process, where we've been and things like that. I have, certainly, I have some technical questions that I've got, you know, two major concerns and a technical question that I need to pose because I'm not ready to make a decision close. And so if you want me to lead, I will, and just ask the question, or if anybody else wants to. Mindy?
I just want to say something about the process. So I really appreciate the process and the whole even score. And I think that it was very informative in many ways, surprising. And that maybe we'll do another round of it. Because I'm guessing that I might take things differently, or new things might come up.
Thank you for that comment. We have been sort of have a placeholder in that over the next couple of weeks, assuming that you all might want that.
Yeah, if I could just, as an overview, likewise, just want to acknowledge all the work that the whole team has done to get us here. All the information that you've provided us, where you've been really candid about where there's uncertainty. I've never seen a TBL that's as thorough as this. I feel like, you know, they've done a really, really nice job of providing us everything as possible. It's also, you know, there's so much uncertainty. And as you just acknowledged, the options have some real drawbacks. They all cost us significantly. There's not one here that's revenue-positive. So it's going to be a tough decision, but I really appreciate all the effort that's gone into the outreach and the packaging materials for us.
I'm going to jump in the queue, if you don't mind, and just hit you with a technical question. It's about rate impacts. Were you, if you could bring that slide back up, that would help me.
I would note that Frank had a, Frank did a lot of work on the rate impacts, and so it might be best to have.
He'll be here in five minutes. He just texted me.
We can give it a shot, and then.
Well, I'll pull up the question and see what happens. So you have these rate impacts anywhere from eight, you know, from 10% to 15%. So this is going to, we're going to raise rates 35% plus or minus over the next 10 years anyhow. And so the compounding function of my, let's just say my bill is $100 a month right now. And in five years from now, it's going to be 120 because of the natural rate impacts. And then we're going to compound that rate impact. It's not going to be, like, are you compounding from today's rates? Or are you compounding from the future rates?
Lisa?
Thank you, Deborah.
Sorry, Commissioner Brown, finish.
That's cool. We're here to get answers. You don't even have to call me Commissioner. I don't care.
I, I could just feel Lisa willing me to jump in. So this rate example was all brought back to today. If we borrowed that money today, because these were the net present values on the project, you're right, it will have a compounding effect. So those other rate increases that we showed you in the Long-Term Financial Plan will compound on top of this.
Yeah, so you raised my rates 35%, and then we raised from that 35%, we go up another 15. It's a whole lot more, it's a ton more than if we just look at, take today's rates of 15%. And so I'm just, I'm concerned about getting the real number. Because if we, you look at the timeframe of how we do that, and we already have those in the 10-year capital plan, those projected rate increases, to me, that will help me, because I can't tell a constituent right now totally what this is going to be. But it's, to me, I think it's going to be a lot more than that. And I hate to be the dark cloud, but if I'm wrong, help me. But I'm, that's, that was my just question. Doesn't need to be answered now, but if you could do that for me, that would, it would help. And then a couple of my general concerns that I had about this, no matter what the decision is, and you've seen them, is that, you know, they're not going to withhold water in Cougar anymore. And so it's going to be run in the river. We're not going to have the ability to adjust the flows to meet environmental and other things. And so that being said, we know salmon are what, blenders now, but if they become endangered and that flow continues the way it is, if we return to service, we run the risk of having FERC or the National Fisheries say, we're not going to divert water anymore and generate power, because the fish don't have a way to get up the river. And I don't want to spend a quarter of a billion dollars generating power for five years, because we already have a stranded asset. We relicensed Lieber at Walterville 15 years ago, and we have an amortizing. Yeah, we're going to have a stranded cost there, but it's not in this number. So that's one of my concerns. And, and my other concern was, uh, I don't have one of those senior moments. I'll come back. Well, I know it will. It was, was, that was the water, and the other one was.
Walterville.
Say again?
Walterville.
Yeah, Walterville. If we, either, either scenario where we go and return to service, we don't have any costs of fixing Walterville, and it's leaking. And I don't think FERC is going to decouple the license. If so, if we go out and say we want to select either, either option that generates power, we're going to open the license backup. And when we open the license backup, we're going to have, the temperature regimen is going to kick in, because it was missed on the last license, as we know. And then we also have the potential cost to have to fix Walterville, and none of those costs are in here.
That's correct. That said, we, our financial team has been running net present values, assuming either relicensing or decommissioning for Walterville, and you will be seeing those numbers the, sometime in the next couple of weeks, right, Frank?
My concern was return to service in either option, either full return or Lufman, because either way, we got to get a new license. And I'm just, if we're calculating 190 million or 225 million, that's totally absent of what Walterville is going to be. And how do we, how do we factor that into this decision-making process? Because if this board comes down leaning towards some form of returning to service, we're going to have to factor in relicensing Walterville as well. And could that add 50 to 100 million bucks for this?
Chopping at the bit to get in?
Yes.
So I can't make a decision when we have a $100 million.
Yeah, you, you will have the full cost of relicensing for Walterville in, in the information that you get over the next month.
So we're making, we're making an assumption that FERC will mandate that we fix that canal, too?
Yeah, we've, we've looked at, and, and yeah, there's, there's, it's somewhere between 50 and 100 million, just to give you a rough, rough idea. Those numbers will be included in the relicensing options, so that you can, and, and that would be the same anticipated kind of things we would get with any relicensing, which would be fish mitigation, water, you know, generation repair. I mean, all of those things would be included.
But we would add 50 to 100 million to either one of the options of return to service?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay. I just, you need to understand that. Now I've started this.
I mean, I have a lot of questions, but I guess my big question really is, can't we meet with FERC and get some information from them first? There's so many unknowns. And is it possible, meet with somebody and say, like, if we're considering return to service, like, what is the likelihood that you would X, Y, or Z? It just seems like there's so, there's so many unknowns that you must be able to get some information.
Yeah, there are a lot of unknowns. So either a licensed surrender, so a decommissioning scenario, or a relicensing scenario is generally a negotiated agreement, not just with FERC, but with a number of other settlement parties. And that is really where, where the uncertainty lies. There is some uncertainty in terms of decommissioning, whether it would be an option to keep the dam in place. But in terms of, of other components, that's really, if, if you have come to an agreement with our settlement parties, which are federal and state fisheries agencies, tribes, a number of nonprofits are generally the cast of characters, then if we, we go to FERC with a negotiated agreement, that's generally what FERC, for the most part, will agree to. It's getting to that negotiated agreement and what that looks like for all of the stakeholders that creates the large uncertainty, in addition to whether or not we could do a decommissioning scenario that maintained a dam, because that is actually common. I don't know, I can't think of an example.
Well, what about knowing that they would even be willing to extend our license and wrap it into Walterville? Right? Like, that's a big unknown that we don't know. Is that something that we could find out ahead of time? Because if we had that information, it would make the decision better.
Well, we've done it in the past. We've held technical conferences with the FERC, but usually that doesn't come at this stage in the decision-making process. That comes, you know, later on when we're trying to move towards a path. FERC is generally silent, for the most part, as, you know, with the exception of their written rules. They have asked us to give them quarterly updates of where we are at with our Lieber decision-making process, because their, their urgency is really around the public safety component at this point. We did have our attorneys look into the various regulatory options and what FERC is likely to do. And from that, we do have a pretty good sense that we've got a little bit of time to figure it out, but we don't have forever, and that whatever option we choose for Lieber is going to result in something that will, as Commissioner Brown says, triggers an alternative for Walterville, because they're, they are licensed together. However, we do believe we could move down the path of a decommissioning alternative for Lieber and a different, separate license for Walterville if we chose to do that.
I mean, questions, comments, Mindy, or excuse me, Sonia?
One, the slide that has Commissioner waiting, three of those should be negative. They're positive, and they're not accurate at all. If anybody's in the crowd wondering, oh, why don't they just go? One way or the other, the decisions are positive. They're not, they're all negative. We have no good choices. I mean, they're, they're all very challenging, they're all very tricky. It's, there's no winners in any of these. It's, we're choosing the least worst.
You're talking about the bottom line, Commissioner Carlson, because there are a couple of positive numbers that are accurate.
Full decommissioning on the environmental side is positive? Oh, okay. All right. Well, if you total, oh, sorry, the totals at the bottom, those are all negative. Got it, yeah. Okay. So I'm just going to kind of roll through my list and begin to stop and chime. The rates and the, so the rates under the economic category and the social, social justice seem like very similar to measurements to me. I'm curious if they're, like, how you distinguish those, you know, slightly differently. I'm guessing it's more that the social justice aspect hits lower income, whereas the rates hit everybody equally. But to me, they're very interlinked.
Can you go back? I think it's two slides, it might just be one. It's the slide that has all the colors on it? Yeah, this one. Is this where you're referencing?
Yeah, I mean, when, in the, you know, in the document, I don't know if others felt that way, but for me, I had the challenge when I was ranking them, thinking about two of them, because I feel like they're very similar measurements. I mean, if you raise the rates on one, you're going to impact lower income, you're going to impact the rates. So, you know, for me, it, it was curious how those were rated in here, too. You know, like, project costs and impact rates, you know, slightly different mix of how those are ranked on the social justice, even though by and large, it seems very similar to me. So I don't know what the nuance is between those. And, you know, for me, I, I really appreciate the, the ranking, and I like that we're rating them, so it gives a bigger spread. But like, the environmental ones, there's only six categories in total, so the opportunity for impact there is only really a 30-point spread over five categories, where there's 14 categories on the social side, and there's four on the economic side. So kind of the amount of numbers available, just, just thinking about the process and how we're rating this and using this as a tool. And I don't know if others had thoughts about that, but I want to think about how those numbers calculate. If we are actually using these as a tool for decision-making, some of these don't really, like, pan out to anything at all. Like, the wetlands ones, they're all ranked exactly the same all the way across, no matter what point you choose, right? So it doesn't, like, as a decision-making point, it doesn't really sway anything. Neither does the noise level. There's one other one that has two, so the domestic groundwater wells. Like, none of those are impact, they're all impacted, you know, roughly by this metric, the same way across all of them. So I tried to, you know, think about how those interact with one another.
Really good point. So there's definitely a number of them that are on here that have relatively similar levels of negative or positive impact, regardless of the alternative. We felt like it was still important to list them on there.
Absolutely.
So that folks that raised those concerns or had those concerns could see that, yep, it was, made the list, and it got its comparative score.
Absolutely. It's something that we consider is in here, but also it's not swaying it between the decisions. And I'm just pointing those out as we think about kind of the, you know, how we use this tool. If others want to chime in or stop me, I'm happy. I've got lots of these kinds of comments, so.
Matt's got his hand up, so maybe we can just get some representation here.
Yeah, just one thought about the TBL, at least from my perspective. It, it, just going through it, that exercise caused me to think a lot about what's important and how are we collectively weighing these things? I don't personally see it as a decision-making tool. I see it as a way to get us all thinking about the, the relative values and how we collectively feel about it. But to me, like, none of the scores here are like, oh, that's obvious what we're going to do. So I don't feel that the numbers have to be as precise. I think it's, it's good fodder to help us really feel this. And then I guess, just very quickly back to FERC. I, I heard you say that FERC doesn't typically, you know, join the conversation this early. But this also feels like, and maybe I'm wrong, this feels like a very unusual project altogether. And I wonder if they would join the conversation anyway. I mean, if any inclination towards, you know, a couple of the, the versions, you know, the, the partial return to service will, well, there's some interest in that. Like, could they tell us if that's, like, completely off the table? That would be really helpful, from my perspective. So I, I would, I would encourage us to see if there's any information we can get from FERC that can help inform our discussion, recognizing there, there may just not be at this stage, but I think it'd be valuable to ask. I would say for tonight, from my perspective, it would be really valuable to see if there was one scenario that we were all like, yeah, we don't want to do that. Even just taking one off, even if we're not more clear about where we want to go, just narrowing the list would be valuable. We have four hours left in the conversation, but from my perspective, that could be one thing to get done.
Frank wants to chime in, then I'm going to hear JB.
I was going to say that the, the issue of FERC, there's a couple of ways that, that we've approached this, and then there's a lot further to go. One of the things that we did do, and it's surprising how many different case histories there are within the, the FERC, I'll refer to it in certain case law. They, they have dealt with partial return to services, they have dealt with splitting of projects. There's a certain degree of, of legal review that has taken place that without the, the exact discussion with all the settlement parties, we've been able to say, this is, this is FERC's history, and so we can weigh some of that in there. The other piece of it is, part of the final recommendation for the board's consideration will include one of the other values of the TBL, which is where and how can you mitigate parts of the decision? I think Commissioner Carlson's point around some of these are kind of the same, no matter what, what the choice is. I think when, when I went through the exercise, I put zeros on a number of. And it wasn't because I didn't care about those particular issues. I didn't see the decision as being impactful for those, for those particular elements. And so I think we will have recommendations around a go-forward path with FERC, for example. There are going to be a number of areas that we will want to have specific discussions with FERC around a particular issue. You know, one of them that, that we're starting to look into is, what's the impact of this million-year versus, say, a 10,000-year maximum flow? Because we, we would want to know if that's something that could be negotiated, and what's the value of that? And so if it doesn't make any difference to our project, then, then that's something that we, we might get a zero on the, on the, on the chart. But there's, the recommendation and part of the value of the TBL is to identify these, these areas that you talked about, where there's commonality, where there's differences, and then where can you apply mitigation efforts?
Before we move on from FERC, I think we've got a.
Yeah, I, one other thought, response to Commissioner McCray. Get good participation in 2021 in our semi-quantitative risk assessment. Now, these were the FERC folks from the dam safety side of the equation. So their participation in that process gave us a pretty good idea about what they would expect for a return to service. So, and as shown, our cost estimate is not cheap. There's a lot of improvements that would be demanded in order for it to be acceptable for long-term operation.
Okay, thanks. Be, you got anything?
Yeah. I like hearing from the rest of the group, but, you know, a couple of things that I have taken away is, this is, obviously, it's a generational project, no matter which way we go. And, and more than generational. I mean, this is a, you know, you're talking a million-year flood. Well, this is a 100-year legacy, in, in my mind. It's, it's going forward 100 years. We've used the, the power for the last 90 years, and, and it helped build this community, right? In the presentation we had before, it was like, they built this so that there would be electricity for the city of Eugene, and that's how this town got started. So that weighs into it. You know, to me, it's not just about the dollars. The dollars are going to be there, it's going to cost, it's going to cost us a lot of money, one way or another. Between 140 and 240, yeah, that's a lot of money. Yeah, it has impacts on ratepayers, but we built a city using, using this power, and, and it's a legacy going forward. I did feel that in, in a lot of the material was weighted against some of the, some of the conclusions, I think, return to, return to service. Because of the economic challenges that return to service has, I felt in the material, it was weighted negatively, just the way that I read it. And I'm just putting that out there as, as that's something that I felt. Again and again, I kept feeling, oh, gosh, you know, return to service costs $250 million, and here's a bunch of bad things about return to service. For me, return to service is something that, if it could happen, would be my best-case scenario for a lot of reasons. One, it maintains the things up the river. Two, it gives us, it gives us power generation that is, that is carbon-free. Three, it gives water to the fish hatchery. If you look at those up there, there's a lot of zeros, and the only, the only thing that's really red, red in, in full return to service is the cost. Cost over. Cost over, take that cost and say, yeah, we're going forward, you know, this license or the next, yeah, but if you also say, we're going back 90 years, that cost go down a little bit. But the, the, the economic and the social and the things that we've gotten out of that, that thing over that, that time. And there, you know, there's, there's slides later on that talk about a sinking fund, right? If there'd been a 90-year-old sinking fund attributed to this, those fives would be green, right? It's just that we didn't have that. So, you know, that's some of my things that I do have questions about. If it goes back to taking the dam out, what does that mean as far as water rights for, for us? I mean, water rights, what does that mean for, you know? Is it better for the native salmon upriver? Or is it, or are we getting hatchery salmon all the way up to Cougar now because we don't have a dam? These are, these are some questions that I'm kind of digging around, wanting, wanting to hear. That's my initial take.
I'd start round two. So I have a question, I have a comment too about, are we worried, I mean, if an environmental group decided to take the warm springs case and apply it to us? We got a strong legal opinion on that because if we go down any of the roads and start spending all this money and then we get, that we lost our water right because it wasn't five and a second years.
The warm spot, and Frank, why don't you remind us what that is?
Yeah, in the case of the, the springs case, there was a, I'll say a pseudo hydro, hydro project that really never came to fruition. The Supreme Court ruled that because that water right was, the original purpose was for hydro generation, at some point you have to generate hydro or you lose the water right. And they, they picked a five-year shot clock that said, if you don't operate this facilities, if you have a hydro-based water right and you don't operate for five years, you lose that water right. And that's, that's what the Supreme Court of Oregon decided. Now, our remedy is to, and Jason will talk about this in his recommendations, I think he already launched that last month, our remedy is to pursue a change to the law to cover, to identify a difference between if you're operating under an, an existing hydro license versus just this not. So we, we will know within the next year whether that's, that's going to, and we're getting a lot of support, and it, it will be introduced likely in the House this year. And that'll, that'll get us around this five-year shot clock.
I know you're in the middle of your questions, so what does it mean for us to lose our water rights?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, it's a hydroelectric water right that we have, so if you decommission under, with this new law in place, you would lose that water, that hydroelectric water right is gone. We are getting good, Jason's doing a great job collaborating with Northern General Electric, Pacific Corps, as well as Water Watch, who was the sponsor for that legislation to, to protect against zombie projects that Frank was describing, which have a law right that they really are speculating on and not ever use. So we have, we are a different category and, and I think not what Water Watch intended effect with that legislation. So the pretty, pretty favorable responses so far about our ability to get an exemption from the shot clock for our type of situation.
That answers Mindy's question. If, if we were to lose a water right, what would be our process to reinstate a water right?
We need to reapply for a hydroelectric water right and, you know, from ground zero through a renewable resource and probably, you know, virtually impossible to be able to establish that water.
If we decommissioned, would we reform any water right? No. But I guess what I'm saying is, is there, if, if we decommissioned, is there any drawback to not having a water right? No, because we don't.
That was Water Watch's point. They were upset, was a project that got decommissioned, but kept opening to resurrected.
So, no, that's cool. And the only other thing I wanted to do is just from a historical perspective, I think since I've been on this board, we have divested of three renewable resources here. We didn't, we, we divested a co-gen up in Columbia County, we divested a wind project in Wyoming, we divested a hydro project in Idaho. Yes, I can't remember the names, but we've already sold them because it made no economic sense that we got out of it. It's not dissimilar to, to this same process. So there's, you know, there's been precedent established, knowing that this, what, 4% of our portfolio? You know, that, that's one thing I think that just to keep in mind. I too want to keep things green, but I just want to remind people that this is not the first time that EWEB has considered stepping away from renewable resource because there's a point that they make no economic sense. And I think, I think the, the one in Idaho or the one in Wyoming, which, one of them, the retooling of the wind farm was really upside down. And I think Idaho was just something that we felt our power and made when we, and I don't know why, I can't remember why we divested that, but just wanted to, just let you know that I've been, this is the first time that we, if we go down that route. Mindy, your turn.
And I just apologize for the free association nature of my questioning tonight. I have so many questions and I feel like I'm bouncing around a little bit, but my question is about the decommissioned stormwater conveyance. So if we were to choose that path, then we are still on the hook for maintaining those canals and property.
Right. It's ongoing, going in and capital investment.
And even though we think that we have way much, we have much better methods now for constructing those canals and everything state-of-the-art, could find ourselves in a similar, you'll find ourselves in a similar situation 50, 75 years from now, we would build canals, right?
If they were converted to stormwater function and not hydroelectric, it's a different regulatory environment that you're in.
Yeah.
So right now, it's FERC regulated because of a hydro generation, generating power. The regulation would shift over to the Oregon Water Resources Board. It's a, a different animal.
Holly, somebody else asked.
This is kind of run of the river. I mean, I've heard several people say, I got a lot of questions. Get them out there. Sonya?
I'm curious. So as I look at this, a lot of the social costs, and, you know, fully impact the people who are most associated with that region, which are upriver residents. The only one that seems to be the lowest on that is the one that maintains the dam, which is the full return to service. I'm curious, and I was trying to look in the, the cost here, we don't have an option where we get rid of the canals but keep the dam. Is there a reason for that and how much of the cost is associated with just operating the dam itself? Because I'm wondering if there's middle ground where a lot of the, you know, recreation and the property values and some of those things are really key to that area up there, I mean, to me are related to just the dam being there in itself, but not the operation of the generation, which has a very high cost, I'm assuming, because we have to actually build a full plant, that sort of thing. So if you could maybe tease out the dam separately from the rest of it, I'd love to hear more about that.
Holly, could you move forward any slides? I don't, I can't remember which slide it's on. Find it here.
Also, that other slide, it does have a typo. 91 is negative on that slide.
So it's going to be in the back, Holly.
There was a, a table in the workshop memo that wrote down NPV by major category, and the structure, structure removal was important. Just a word table.
Then there is.
So.
Before we get into the numbers, just let me real quickly say, the reason why we assumed dam removal in the decommissioning scenario is really that there is, that is the sort of the precedent that's out there for decommissioning any hydro project. That's, that's generally what FERC requires and not only FERC, but the other regulatory agencies would want and require. That said, Lieberg is a very different type of hydro project than most of the hydro projects that have been decommissioned. With its length of canal and the fact that it's not a storage reservoir, it's, it's just a very, very different, set up very differently, and there's no precedent out there for a project like ours. But we made some assumptions in part because we wanted you to understand what sort of your worst-case cost scenario would be.
I was just gonna, just one other area on it. They, as Lisa pointed out, it's a negotiated, it's like a new license is a negotiated agreement with a lot of stakeholders involved, so is decommissioning. And so we can certainly lobby for an outcome that we desire, but all those stakeholders that come to the table, there's some powerful ones that might not support the dam being there as a generation. So it's not really necessarily in our control. FERC, like Lisa was saying before, tend to go with what the settlement parties are accepting. But yeah, this table that's on the screen now, you have a couple of line items related to the dam removal, but structure removal, dams, streams, tail race barriers, that's the seventh down. Then, related to the removal of the structure, is going to be the restoration of the first item. It was related to restoration. And then the other thing to point out on this is that these are the direct construction costs only. Later down on the table, I think on the next page, you'll see some additional line items that basically factor up to give you this whole cost. There's second item down, contingencies, organization, design, and losing a dam, there's design costs associated with construction dropping, permitting licensing, all those kind of add-on base construction costs that are top of the table.
All-in best guess, I mean, if we were able to keep the dam, not have generation, I understand what you were saying was not being able to do that. I mean, we had up there before, there, it's, it's, it's embedded in a number of different categories, so it's hard to kind of piece that one out for me.
It is, it is.
It's like 7.5 million and one and maybe parts of.
31 million, 31, 32 million.
31 to 32.
That's counting, design licensing, feasibility, construction management, all-in cost.
And the O and M.
Construction.
Well, just, that's just construction.
Correct.
And then, and then there's O and M of that for the NPV for the duration of the ownership of the dam.
Correct. And we, we actually have.
Sensitivity, we'll see within the next couple of weeks here, we have run, you know, we have run an NPV on that, Alicia has, and we're calling that alternative 4A, which is essentially alternative 4 while maintaining the dam bridge, et cetera, that, you know, or alternative 3 with, without a powerhouse would be another comparable way to, to look at it as well, so. So that is something we're looking at, and the uncertainty must be known that we, at the mercy of FERC and other regulatory agencies to allow us to pay our will bear your dam, even if we're not generating in the future.
Your intuition is correct, that if you could, it's a pretty dramatic capital cost savings after, and ongoing O and M doesn't offset that.
I mean, I'm trying to balance the, you know, the folks that are really impacted upriver by taking that, I mean, that's, that's a very large portion of the economic, the, you know, the property values, the businesses that rely on that, that piece. But on the flip side of that, everybody is paying for this massive cost with the only one is return to full service, but it's the only one right now that has the associated dam with it. So I'm just trying to look at.
Well, it's two. Alternative 3 as well has the dam and maintains the dam and lake as well, so both of our, our generation options, both to maintain the dam, bridge, lake, and a portion of the canal, and then additional portions of stormwater canal would also likely have some recreational value there as well.
Okay, that's interesting, because before our last meeting, that's what I thought was the case, but then at our last meeting, you all told me that that was not the case, that the dam was the only one that was staying as in full return to service, so. Okay, so it, it is in both, the full return and partial. Okay, thank you.
John B.
What you just told, said, we think, have we talked to the settlement partners and what are they, what are their views? I mean, if, if we're saying all of this depends on what we can negotiate with the settlement partners, either on decommissioning or relicensing, have we had those conversations? Because if we pick an option and the settlement partner say, no, I'm sorry, that doesn't work for me, or, you know, I mean, obviously there's, has to have been some interaction with those parties, and it would be helpful for me to know what, where they're landing.
Depends on which partner you're talking about and with, so we would make an assumption that we would have sort of the same suite of settlement partners that we have with our Carmen Smith license, which includes state and federal fish and environmental agencies, but also parks, tribes, other nonprofits. I will tell you, and, and in nonprofits, including recreation users and others, they don't all agree. And we can make some assumptions that the, the federal, federal fish agencies generally favor dam removal, how they would land.
Even in this case where it's a barrier that keeps the, that keep, I mean, we've, we've heard from people in this room that the fisheries people actually, some of them like having the barrier there to separate off the natives.
Yeah, it's, it's convoluted. It depends on who you're talking to, right? And whether folks favor managing wild fisheries through reducing hatchery fish, and so that would, that would be a different outcome, or maintaining a hatchery fishery and how you manage the food free depends on which option you're choosing there. So you're going to get a different opinion depending on which fisheries perspective your agents will be.
How do you, follow up on the question. How do you meet with all these different partners? Do you go to them individually and say, this is what you're thinking? Or do you get everybody together in a room or a workshop and people talk about it?
We do it generally as a group, and so how it's worked in our previous licenses is we'd have a whole bunch of different groups. So there would be a fisheries working group that would be all the stakeholders that are interested in the fisheries component. You would have a recreation, aesthetics, and historic working group, and the, the different, parse them out in different ways, but we generally work through these negotiated settlements together as a group with a facilitator. It'd take quite a long time.
And it's all, it always happens where we come with the idea and go there versus getting everybody together and saying, we're trying to figure this out and we want to hear what all of our partners.
So we initiate some sort of action that then folks have an opportunity to sign on as a settlement party if they, if they want to. So there's an action that's, that's initiated, then we, then we start working through the process of working together. In my experience of doing this for the last 15 years, the settlement parties tend to like a proposal that they can respond to as opposed to brainstorming sessions, but there's multiple ways to do it.
Are there, are there large lever, I mean, are there people that would say, I've got a veto on this, right? I mean, there, you know, if there's somebody that says, yeah, I like a park and I like picnic benches, that's one, that's one stakeholder, right? But if there's federal agencies or tribal agencies or something like. But if there's federal agencies or tribal agencies or something like that that can just say, no, have we reached out to any of those large lever stakeholders?
We work very closely with those large level lever stakeholders on our other projects. They have been involved and engaged in Lieberg-Walterville during the course of this license. They haven't particularly weighed in specifically on this, but you're, you're right in that there are some agencies that have mandatory conditioning authority, and so they do affect a veto that might come via their authorization under the Clean Water Act, or the Endangered Species Act, or, you know, this is not on Forest Service land, but if the forest, if it's on Forest Service land like we have at Carmen, they also have some conditioning authority. So it depends on the nature.
Have we reached out to those people, to ask them what their opinion is on this question?
Not specifically to ask them what they would like us to do at Lieberg, no.
I think one of those, and one of those that I think we, one of the partners that we should be paying close attention to is tribal governments, and I know, you know, I know we've done, we've done some outreach, my understanding is that we haven't had a lot of feedback on this project at this point, and maybe you can share some of the reasons why you think that is, but I would propose that we ask staff to do a more focused interaction, reach out specifically to the tribal governments that are interested here and see what their opinions are about, try to have options to the extent that's possible. I would really value this area.
If you look at the list, this is a sidebar, if you look at the list of stakeholders when we've relicensed Carmen, there's 28. I mean, from the corporate whales to the Rodney Knutnell Foundation, there's every organization you can think, imagine, that's got a seat at the table, and it's, it's not only tribal, because tribal came up with the lamprey and things such as that, and then meetings with them, but there are a ton of them, and I think that to single out one, I'd, you know, I'd like to, we're gonna do it with two of them all, because I don't think it would be appropriate to limit, not bring something to the table, so I didn't get your time.
Well, and I, I guess I'll respectfully disagree that I feel like the voice of the tribes in this area have, from my, from my perspective, have carried a bigger weight than the one for any special of interests, you know, not that we're not listening to all the interests, but from my perspective, that's one item being special.
I got a comment or two. Actually, a question on the fish, maybe John, about your, you know, sorting the fish. The only reason they have to sort them is because they plant, and they, they have native fish and hatchery fish, and since the hatchery hasn't had any water in it for three years, the salmon that they dumped four years ago are coming up, they come up to the hatchery on Greenwood Drive, they don't know where to go, so they swim up the river, and we're getting all these hatchery fish mixing with the native fish. If we didn't plant hatchery fish in there, we wouldn't have that problem. You know, they still have to get over that impediment, but they don't have to sort them because there wouldn't be any hatchery fish. And as a fisherman, and I know that I'm gonna probably get some rocks thrown at me for saying this, it pains me to see when fishing season happens, the native fish come up usually earlier than, than the hatchery fish, and everybody's out fishing for them, they hook a native, goes right down to their stomach, and then they have to release it. You can cut the line and leave the hook and everything in them, or, or then, I've seen so many native fish floating because they've been hooked, because you don't know what's biting the line, you hook up salmon, you bring it in, you stress it out, oh, by the way, it's a native, you release it, and it, some of them die. And so, I personally, if, we didn't have hatchery fish on the Mackenzie, I'm not so sure I'd shed a tear as much as I fish for them, but I'm getting older and more wiser about protecting the native fish habitat. So I do know that the Corps of Engineers has a mandate to supply, and I don't know if Lieber catchery can accommodate both trout and salmon if they elect to do it, or if not, and then if somebody just said, get rid of the actual creek hatchery and use it, do it all. And, you know, we did stormwater option four and kept the dam, that would check a lot of boxes for me, getting out there. Thoughts?
Matt? Yeah, follow up on your comment. I have a similar concern about the, I guess, to protect the native fishery. My understanding, though, is that the habitat upstream of Lieberg is degraded enough or limited enough at this point that it would be hard for a native fishery to sustain itself without hatchery fish? Is that...
They don't let hatchery fish go over the dam.
Well, no, I understand, but if we go through the process, okay, so we remove the dam and we stop providing hatchery fish as you just proposed, right? My understanding is that there's not actually enough habitat, spawning habitat, and et cetera, upriver, for that population of native fish to sustain itself. But I'm not sure what your no means.
There's, the Mackenzie actually has exceptional spawning habitat. There is some, there are some habitat projects that are underway that will even increase that more, but from a native fish perspective, if you're talking about springfish and salmon, which are listed in the Endangered Species Act, then Mackenzie has gorgeous habitat.
And my understanding was that the Army Corps dams were providing a barrier to a fair amount of the habitat that would historically have been there.
They are, Cougar and Blue River do provide a barrier. That said, Cougar, there is fish passage at Cougar now. And so, I personally, as a former, former fish biologist, I'm not at all concerned about the ability for the Mackenzie to sustain a healthy wild population.
Ben.
I'm gonna ask two questions. The one is about the fish. And maybe this is in the background, and I just can't remember, but why are fish hatcheries listed under social, I don't know. Why did you separate those things out?
That's a good question. So, the fish hatcheries really did show up, and another commissioner brought this up during the waiting exercise, they show up, it probably should have parsed it out into both to make it a little bit more clear. There are social components to having the fish hatchery there, namely, fishing opportunities, local jobs, those sorts of things that we considered more of a, of a social issue as opposed to an environmental issue. Could also put fish hatcheries in the aquatic resources portion of the TBL. That said, I, you know, if you, depending on who you talk to from a fisheries perspective, you're gonna get a different opinion on hatcheries, and so it's whether they're helpful or harmful. And so, even that is, is a split judgment, so it's, it's hard to parse it out there. My personal opinion is, you know, I tend to agree with Commissioner Brown on the hatchery from an environmental perspective. That said, don't want to negate the, the social benefits that having a hatchery in the area does provide.
My other question is, when do we get to hear from the fish? Or do you do a staff waiting where you can be like, staff A, staff B?
Our, our sort of full conglomeration and recommendations to the board and the logic behind our thinking is this, is mid-November, third week in November, third week in November document that'll come back to the board describing how we view all of these, these issues that, that you're bringing up, everything from fish to economics to social, how we weigh that, what we think can be negotiated or mitigated, what we think can't, sort of the pros and cons of if you want to keep a dam for a bridge or not, you know, things, things like that. So, we're gonna go through our own process of, of debate and, and consolidation, and that'll be part of what comes back to the board, and it, it will likely come back with some conditions and some contingencies. I don't, don't expect us to come back and say, we vote for option X. I, I think it's gonna be a lot more nuanced than that, which I think is part of what we're hearing from the board, too, is that there's, there's assumptions, you need to be able to verify those assumptions, understand the risks with those assumptions, whether that be the 28 settlement parties and, you know, the pros and cons of that process, FERC, tribes, there's, there's just a lot that, that we'll sort through. But we're not, we're not, we, we wanted to hear your perspectives today, knowing that we didn't expect the same, we didn't expect a recommendation from the board either. This, this was meant to facilitate where you kind of feel similar, you know, things that you might, you know, one person might say, this is really important to me, and someone else says, no, that's not important to me, so trying to understand a little bit more about where you're, the variance and the commonality between commissioners.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing about the FERC settlement process? So it's, it's, one of the pieces, and this is, this is a drastic change in FERC in the last 20 years. It didn't used to have a settlement party process, it was just a direct, and what happened was, people who were not invited to that table started filing lawsuits. And so, part of the reason you go through a settlement process, and the reason that there are these stakeholders, and whether they're small or large, if you get to the point where you are actually filing a license, FERC wants to see as broad of a settlement agreement as possible to avoid the future litigation. So whether it's tribes, whether it's an environmental organization, whether it's a direct action agency, FERC, that's why FERC wants to see a broad settlement agreement, is it just reduces the risk of future litigation. So that's, that's, last 20 years or so has been, that's why when we talk about settlement parties, and the, the sort of the vastness of them, why it's important to be inclusive in that process, is that if someone wants a picnic table, and we don't put in a picnic table, they, they can say, I'm not settled, I'm not settling, and I, by the way, you might see me later, kind of thing.
So, in, in the numbers that we're running, relicensing or decommissioning, part of that is a settlement agreement. Are there dollars for mitigation in those numbers? I mean, because you had mitigation, I mean, your creek has mitigation for, for Carmen, that was millions of dollars. Are those in that number or not? So if I do, if I do full return to service, and the license needs to be done, and there's a mitigation part of that, is that part of the 250, or is that on top of it?
I intend to support it to be part of that 250.
Okay.
And across the board, on decommissioning as well.
Okay.
Except Walterville's not included in that, which will be included by the time you get the information in November. Thank you.
Procedural question, others. Initially, I said, we're just gonna eat, go, but, you know, we're on camera, there's a lot of people watching us. Sometimes it's not the most graceful thing in the world to watch somebody eat a cheap burger. Kind of break for 10 minutes and get the initial food down, and I mean, we're 45% in, I think we've got some good, everybody's okay with that? Okay? Is it okay, Frank? We're gonna adjourn, I'm gonna adjourn this for no more than 15 minutes, maybe help after we can eat. I think that's... Right? One thing.[1392.04]
Good question. And initially, I said, we're just gonna eat, you know, but you know, we're on camera, there's a lot of people watching us. Sometimes it's not the most graceful thing in the world to watch somebody eat a cheap burger. Kind of break for 10 minutes and get the initial food down. And I mean, we're 45% in, I think we've got some good, everybody's okay with that? Okay? Is it okay, Frank? We're gonna adjourn, I'm gonna adjourn this for no more than 15 minutes, maybe how fast we can eat.
I like the thumbs up, thank you. I'll reconvene the October 22nd, or 25th, 2022 work session of the Eugene Water Electric Board, and go back to open discussion. Anybody have, want to raise your hand first, or?
I have a question. I'm gonna jump in, then I'll get to Matt. So we talked about a hybrid somehow, if the dam was replaced, you would put a bridge in. Has anybody gone to ODOT? Because that's probably one of the most dangerous intersections now I've ever seen. And would ODOT even allow us to put a bridge in there? Have we even asked the question? Because that's a pretty, there's no refuge lane, there's no acceleration, de-acceleration, and people coming down the hill if they want to cross that, that's very, very dangerous. So have we even approached that question?
We have not asked ODOT, but we would just have to live by the Oregon standard specifications for that. And my assumption is, we would have to straighten that out a little bit, put a new approach span in on a new bridge.
Yeah, I'm thinking acceleration lane going up, we'd probably have to fill part of the lake, and would that require, I mean, I'm just thinking about permitting and doing all those things. And so I'm just planting that seed about, because I know you have an option there, but I want to make sure that that option is even doable. So we put that up. Thank you. Other questions and comments? Matt, you're in.
Yeah, I'll take a quick question, and this is gonna probably run speculation, but I guess that's why I'm asking. We've talked about, once we've made a decision, and we're, we've told the project that we'll certainly pursue resources and funding besides even ratepayers to help offset the costs. Is there any reason to think that we would be more likely to get funds to relicense or decommission?
Good question, and I wouldn't make your guess at that one, but I don't know if anyone else on the panel has.
Hey, so a little bit of research I've been doing on just different grant funding is, actually, there is some dam safety in the infrastructure bill, I think it's the 247. Potta Money also allows for dam removal. So it's for both, goes both ways, so there's even decommissioning funds for that as well, you know, for removing a dam. So, and then there'd be other decommissioning avenues, that would be more dollars from environmental sides, that would, you know, from their perspectives, and some money that would be for, you know, restoring a river, et cetera, that, some pots of money available. So I think it's pretty competitive both ways to, to get, to get dollars. However, we wouldn't be able to fund the project in its entirety, the small little, little bits, but every, every little bit does help.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. So where, where we do, so I would agree, there's opportunities on the safety side. I think those are fairly limited. Sort of the environmental recovery piece, which would be if you're returning to its natural state, there's an opportunity there. There's probably very little opportunity, just simply the powerhouse piece of this. We're not adding capacity, we're not, we're not adding new carbon-free resource, this is considered existing. And so there may be opportunities of subsegments, but others, probably not. So it doesn't really answer your question. I mean, we tried to give you a little bit of feel for every 20 million, and how it affects rates, and we'll pursue all of the options. But it seems like the environmental recovery piece and the safety piece are the ones with the most opportunity.
So many.
A question about the impact on rates, and I don't know if this is an answerable question or not, but like, at what point do we anticipate that it imposes hardship on people? I know that's a very, very broad question, but I think my, my question is more like, if we look at how many people receive some kind of bill assistance or something like that, do we have any idea, like, if we raise rates, this amount of money, then we anticipate that it's gonna create more hardship for X percentage of people? And, and like, how do, how do we track that, or how do we know how impactful those rate increases will be?
He's gonna look at me, the whole panel looked at me. What we would typically do to answer that question, I don't know that we have a direct number of our customers, but we have percentages from Lane County that fall into certain income bracket. We also know that the state categorizes energy challenged at, when you get to roughly 6% of, of someone's income, they're now in a, in a category of, of, I'll just say, energy, energy burden, that's, thank you, Commissioner. We are not close to that at, at the moment. We're, you know, around the 3% to 4% range. And so the more you add over time, the more that you're gonna push up against that. One of the comments that Commissioner Carlson made earlier about sort of this trade-offs where it would fall, because rates are not only an economic, but you could also put those in the social piece, which, which I agree with. And, and energy and water, well, I'll say utility rates tend to be very regressive when you start to look at, at other forms of sort of income for different kinds of government entities. So we, we think rates are incredibly important, I guess, to, to put it that way, because they do tend to be regressive. And we can check, we can double-check the accounting numbers and see what degree of headroom we might have there relative to our programs and where we would push up. I think that's, that's a good thing for us to follow up on.
Rachel Chilton made a comment about the public survey that went out there, and I seem to recall, she said that the highest incomes, not very rate-sensitive, most incomes actually not very rate-sensitive because they get some assistance. It's those folks that aren't quite blown out to the qualified that really get hit hard.
Yeah, and I, I think that's, that's fair. We, we target a certain percentage to, we try to cover the, basically the fixed costs of our customers for, for a certain number of customers. And so, but I want to, I think the question is valid, at what point do you start pushing up into, into that next group? Because if, if we're looking at this as also limited income, if we want to supplement with that with limited income, there's another piece to this project that you start to push up against. And we'll have to just determine if that's significant or not, I think, which is the basis for the question.
Questions, comments? John B.
Yeah. To piggyback on that, it's, it's not just, for me, and I reached out to somebody earlier, a staff member that I interact with at a different committee, you know, we've got low-income and small ratepayers. We also have large ratepayers. And I'm wondering, I would like to reach out to them. I mean, you know, there's, there's certain industrial ones that are gonna be, you know, it's an easy thing for them to say, rates are very important, and what you do upriver, it doesn't matter to me, keep my rates as low as you can, because they're just writing the check and paying it. But some of our other larger users do have social and economic and University of Oregon, City of Eugene, Lane County, some of our big, big people that write us big checks, they look at it not just as, keep my check as small as I can. So I, I would, I would like to get some sort of a feel from the people that are, that are writing the biggest checks, as well as the people that are writing the smallest checks, on what they feel the attributes of this project are. And it goes to economic development. You know, if you say that we're, we're, you know, on the residential side, if we're at 3% to 4%, and cost burden is, is 6%, okay, on the industrial side, are we going to be pushing ourselves with, not only with this rate increase, but with the other rate increases, are we gonna be pushing ourselves into an economic negative as far as bringing economic prosperity to us in, in developing new businesses to come in here? I mean, that's one of the things that they look at. If you're building, if you're building a chip, or you're, you're opening a chip plant where Hynek's is, one of the things that they're gonna look at is, how much is it gonna cost me to run that building? And, and not just today, how much is it gonna cost me to run it there? So some of those numbers, and some input from some of those type of users would be helpful to me. Because on the other hand, somebody's putting a chip plant in Hynek's, let's say, or whatever we're calling it today, they may look at the, the amenity that is upriver Mackenzie as something that they can use to attract workforce. So they may not just be looking at the, at the bottom line. So the bigger lever pullers, as far as our ratepayers, would be as valuable to me as, as some of the ones that, again, that we haven't heard from as much on this issue in-town users.
Can I ask you a question about, clarifying, just about the amenity upriver? Are you just talking about the lake? Because I don't see where this affects.
I don't, I don't know. I mean, we've, we've heard that they, that, we've heard it referred to as an amenity from, from the people that live upriver. The lake, the fisheries, all of those things. I mean, I don't know what it'll look like. I mean, is it just like below the dam, what the Mackenzie River looks like and above the dam? I mean, is it just gonna be the river, and that's, and that's beautiful, and that's an amenity as it is?
So I got a quick question, on just what you calculated in your costs of 1 and 4 with dam removal. Did you calculate the cost of replacing the habitat for the salmon and the, right? And also the part of putting water back into the river category, hiding it? I don't think pumping it is an option.
Would it only cost it out the lake restoration, river restoration? But not the habitat restoration? Well, yeah, so the habitat, it would restore the.
Yeah, you'd store, you'd get rid of the silicon, all that. There's, there's, it's my understanding, there's a pretty good habitat in there to protect the small salmon in, in the lake. And I just wonder if that's also a little bit important to the native population.
Or, you know, restoring a river, et cetera, that some pots of money available. So I think it's pretty competitive both ways to get dollars. However, we wouldn't be able to fund the project in its entirety. These small little bits, but every little bit does help.
Yeah, yeah.
So where we do, so I would agree, there's opportunities on the safety side. I think those are fairly limited. Sort of the environmental recovery piece, which would be if you're returning to its natural state, there's an opportunity there. There's probably very little opportunity, just simply the powerhouse piece of this. We're not adding capacity. We're not adding new carbon-free resources. This is considered existing. And so there may be opportunities of some segments, but others probably not. So it doesn't really answer your question. I mean, we tried to give you a little bit of feel for every 20 million and how it affects rates. And we'll pursue all of the options. But it seems like the environmental recovery piece and the safety piece are the ones with the most opportunity.
A question about the impact on rates, and I don't know if this is an answerable question or not, but like, at what point do we anticipate that it imposes hardship on people? I know that's a very, very broad question, but I think my question is more like, if we look at how many people receive some kind of bill assistance or something like that, do we have any idea, like, if we raise rates, this amount of money, then we anticipate that it's going to create more hardship for X percentage of people? And like, how do we track that? Or how do we know how impactful those rates are?
He's kind of looking at me, the whole panel looked at me. What we would typically do to answer that question, I don't know that we have a direct number of our customers, but we have percentages from Lane County that fall into certain income bracket. We also know that the state categorizes energy challenged at when you get to roughly 6% of someone's income there. They're now in a category of, I'll just say, energy burden. Thank you, Commissioner. We are not close to that at the moment. We're, you know, around the 3% to 4% range. And so the more you add over time, the more that you're going to push up against that. One of the comments that Commissioner Carlson made earlier about sort of this trade-offs where it will fall, because rates are not only an economic, but you could also put those in the social piece, which I agree with. And energy and water, well, I'll say utility rates tend to be very regressive when you start to look at other forms of sort of income for different kinds of government entities. So we think rates are incredibly important, I guess, to put it that way, because they do tend to be regressive. And we can check, we can double-check the accounting numbers and see what degree of headroom we might have there relative to our programs and where we would push up. I think that's a good thing for us to follow up on.
Rachel Chilton made a comment about the public survey that went out there. And I seem to recall she said that the highest incomes, not very rate-sensitive, lowest incomes actually not very rate-sensitive because they get some assistance. It's those folks that aren't quite qualified that really get hit hardest.
Yeah, and I think that's fair. We target a certain percentage to, we try to cover the, basically, the fixed costs of our customers for a certain number of customers. And so, but I want to, I think the question is valid. At what point do you start pushing up into that next group? Because if we're looking at this as also limited income, if we want to supplement with that with limited income, there's another piece to this project that you start to push up against. And we'll have to just determine if that's significant or not, I think, which is the basis for the question.
Questions, comments? John B.
Yeah. To piggyback on that, it's not just, for me, and I reached out to somebody earlier, a staff member that I interact with at a different committee. You know, we've got low-income and small rate payers. We also have large rate payers. And I'm wondering, I would like to reach out to them. I mean, you know, there's certain industrial ones that are going to be, you know, it's an easy thing for them to say, rates are very important and what you do upriver, it doesn't matter to me, keep my rates as low as you can, because they're just writing the check and paying it. But some of our other larger users do have social and economic and University of Oregon, City of Eugene, Lane County, some of our big people that write us big checks, they look at it not just as keep my check as small as I can. So I would like to get some sort of a feel from the people that are writing the biggest checks, as well as the people that are writing the smallest checks, on what they feel the attributes of this project are. And it goes to economic development. You know, if you say that we're, you know, on the residential side, if we're at 3% to 4% and cost burden is 6%, okay, on the industrial side, are we going to be pushing ourselves with, not only with this rate increase, but with the other rate increases? Are we going to be pushing ourselves into an economic negative as far as bringing economic prosperity to us in developing new businesses to come in here? I mean, that's one of the things that they look at. If you're building a chip, or you're opening a chip plant where Hynek's is, one of the things that they're going to look at is how much is it going to cost me to run that building? And not just today, how much is it going to cost me to run it there? So some of those numbers and some input from some of those type of users would be helpful to me. Because on the other hand, somebody's putting a chip plant in Hynek's, let's say, or whatever we're calling it today, they may look at the amenity that is upriver Mackenzie as something that they can use to attract workforce. So they may not just be looking at the bottom line. The bigger lever pullers, as far as our rate payers, would be as valuable to me as some of the ones that, again, that we haven't heard from as much on this issue, in-town users.
Can I ask you a question about, clarifying, just about the amenity upriver? Are you just talking about the lake? Because I don't see where this affects.
I don't know. I mean, we've heard that, we've heard it referred to as an amenity from the people that live upriver. The lake, the fisheries, all of those things. I don't know what it'll look like. I mean, is it just like below the dam, what the Mackenzie River looks like and above the dam? I mean, is it just going to be the river and that's beautiful and that's an amenity as it is?
So I got a quick question, just what you calculated in your costs of 1 and 4 with dam removal. Did you calculate the cost of replacing the habitat for the salmon and the lamprey? And also the part of putting water back into Lieber Gattery, piping it? I don't think pumping it is an option.
Would it only cost it out the lake restoration, river restoration?
But not the habitat restoration?
Well, yeah, so the habitat, restore the.
Yeah, you get rid of the silicon, all that. There's, it's my understanding, there's a pretty good habitat in there to protect the small salmon in the lake. And I just wonder if, if that's really important to the native population. I'm just wondering if we calculated the cost of replacing that environmental, if we.
We did not include mitigation to replace lost habitat from Lieber Lake for either rearing juvenile salmonas or for lamprey. That said, there's some assumptions that go in there. One is, of course, that we know there's a large population of lamprey in Lieber Lake. Presumably, they would redistribute themselves. And I'm not sure that there's a limited amount of habitat available, but there's certainly a mobilization of those that would occur that they'd need to find another place to go. I would say the same for the salmon and rearing habitat. That said, that doesn't mean that through a negotiated settlement, there wouldn't be some requirement to mitigate for that in some form or fashion.
Thank you.
Going to your point about the increased cost and some of our larger customers, it seems to me that whatever we do, we're going to be dealing with the F D cost here and associated increasing rates. And really, what we're talking about is the difference, do we do the lower-cost version that increases rates by 10%? And I'm using just coarse numbers here, but, or do we do the higher-cost versions that cost 14% or 15%, right? What we're really talking about, the differential is a 4% or 5% increase. We're on the hook for 10% increase, whatever we do. So at least from my perspective, it's consequential and we have to think about it. But it's not as if we have an option here, where we're not bumping up the rates by 10%. That just isn't, so, I don't know. From my perspective, the costs are important, but it doesn't tip the balance like categorically, for me, anyway. And the other thing I would say in terms of the, I had proposed perhaps there are some scenarios that we all might agree work or are less interested in. And I would just put out that, from my perspective, if we were to decommission, I would be a proponent of a full decommissioning in that it seems to me continuing to operate canals upriver indefinitely with no real benefit to EWEB customers is, in the long term, feels like a losing proposition. Like, I don't, I know it costs us extra to fully decommission, but then we are to be done with the project and have unknown long-term onwind costs. That's the way I think about that option.
I agree with Matt, which is not to say that I'm leaning towards decommissioning, because I haven't decided. But if we were to go the decommissioning route, I think that I would lean more towards not having to maintain those canals. You can hear that we have to maintain them to a lesser standard. It won't be as ownerless as we have now, but it just seems like if we were going to decommission it, we may as well turn the river to what it was and not have that forever burden of those canals. Again, I'm not saying that I'm leaning towards decommissioning. I'm just saying, given all of our options, if that was the direction that we ended up going, that's how I'm feeling at this point.
I got a question of staff, but by many, so when Enron hit and EWEB almost would weigh because of financial challenges, didn't we have to raise rates 40%?
I don't remember the exact number. I'd have to go back and research that time period. I know that between 2009 and 2015, on the electric side, it was roughly 70% over those number of years.
Yeah, because, I mean, you didn't, it was, but it, I mean, that was a huge thing and that was all because of a manipulation of the market and things such as that. So we've been through this. I'm not trying to downplay rate increases, because to me, once we find out this compounding I just want to put that out for a historical perspective, that people sitting around this table have had to deal with questions like this before, that they didn't have an option. They just had to say, okay, we're going to raise your rates 60, 70%, because if we don't, we're out of business. And that's not the case here. But I would hope that in the future, we set up a sinking fund, because, you know, someday the future, we're realizing the benefit of this and we're not paying, basically funding depreciation. And so we, what John said, we built a community on this for 90 years. We didn't put a penny in the bank to deal with this. I'm amazed that FERC reissued the license recently and knew that this situation existed. I mean, really? This was, it was just as bad then as it is now. And they reissued a license and now we're stuck with, you know, a quarter of a billion-dollar decision, which is just, it's challenging for me to accept that, but it's a fact that they issued a license knowing that these problems. So if I'm wrong, correct me for the record.
Key driver for a lot of our expenses is the change in the seismic hazard. And that was not understood the way it's understood today back in 2000. A lot of our dollars are driven by trying to make the embankments reliable in a Cascadian event, which is very expensive and wasn't fully understood at the time of the license.
And so for those that are watching this, and so we're required to suck this to a 1 million-year.
1 billion-year flood.
Flood.
And we're on the speed of about 10,000 years.
10,000 years.
Hospitals are, schools are. I think most critical infrastructure, maybe 3,000 years.
It's three times the, thank you.
I just wanted to comment on the economic aspect of it. I know that, you know, a couple of the options are very close in cost, but the others are much higher. And a lot of the people who are in my wards, we live paycheck to paycheck. And, you know, it doesn't seem like much, maybe to the people, a lot more money, but $10 can be the difference between eating for a few days and making your rent or having heat. And that's a monthly consideration for every single one of those people that lives on the margin. So for me, I've rated those very high because those are very, very impacts. We have people out on the street because of a few dollars. And that is very important to me. I don't think it's something that any of us do take lightly, but it is something that weighs very heavily on. Growing up without, and I know what it's like when you're struggling to figure out, hey, are we going to pay heat? Are we going to put food on the table? What are what choices are here? We don't have any good choices here. All of these have major cost implications. It's going to be painful. So for me, I am weighting the ones that have lower dollars more heavily in my favor. For those people out there that don't have the same options.
Any comments or questions? I mean, it's, we're going to send them off with a ton of questions now, but the more we can get out now, I guarantee when we leave here, you'll have more questions. And this is squeezing a balloon, if you know, but we got to get it right as soon as we can. Minnie?
Back to the fisheries thing. Yeah, super confusing. How are we supposed to make sense of it? Because I guess what I'm hearing is that there are some fisheries people who think that we absolutely need the dam because we need hatchery fish and we need to swat them and it's really, really important. And then there's other people that think we need to get rid of that dam, get rid of the hatchery fish and let the native population kind of take over and do its thing. So some of us might be fisheries experts here on this board, but some of us are not, myself included. And how are we supposed to make sense of this issue, I guess?
Really good question, and I'm sorry I don't have a good answer, because it's, you know, it's split within the fisheries community even. Where we get at what the best outcome is, again, is through that settlement, negotiated settlement, where you have multiple stakeholders at the table trying to get, to come to the best compromise. Just one note, it's probably not a popular comment, but I'll make it anyway. So there are fisheries management agencies out there for a reason. We are a utility and we do have a presence on the river and we need to be very responsible with how we operate our facilities. But there are other ways to manage fisheries through those agencies and through other components aside from EWEB taking a major role in fisheries management, if you will.
Other questions or comments? Do you want to discuss about our next steps, where we're going? We haven't, right?
I just sent a comment, and it relates to the fisheries. It also leads to Commissioner Carlson's comments on the economics, Commissioner McCray's comments about returning to a natural state from an environmental perspective. I think that looking at all of these issues across the board, that there are a number of complexities to it. And we're trying to approach it from a stewardship perspective, recognizing that all of these, we have both sort of reaped the benefits of this project for 100 years and have an obligation to set this up for another, you know, maybe indefinite period of time in the most prudent way possible. So when I think about the economics, it may not be a distinct option A versus option D. It might be option D with a certain mitigation to make sure that those funds that we're using for those purposes, we're using the most effectively that we can. The same with some of the fisheries issues. The trend across the Northwest, as probably a lot of you have heard, is that dam removal is considered by a number of those agencies that the best option from a long-term fisheries perspective. That doesn't mean there isn't competing science even within that. But I think when we're looking at sort of all three pillars of the TBL, we're recognizing that within those, there's things that we need to do to be good stewards in whatever decision we make. And it seems like it's, oh, a discrete, we're going this way or we're going that way. And I think it's going to be, we're going to head this way, but we think there's things that we need to do to be good stewards in that process. And part of the value for us is to understand where those areas are. And I appreciate, if you look at, I don't know, the spider diagram, one of those was skewed a bit. I think it was Commissioner C. I don't know who Commissioner C is. That one actually didn't make a difference in the overall outcome. It was one of the other ones that was embedded in there that went very strong social, tugged on the social string the most, that actually changed the overall ranking. So, and it just, it goes to show, to the earlier comment, some of these are very similar across the board, independent of what we do, and then some of them have more drastic differences. And so I just, I just think in this discussion, where we're, you know, how we're approaching this going forward, it's to recognize that the stewardship component of this in all of those categories is ultimately going to matter. We can't just ignore one and go all the other. It's, this discussion, I think, is helping us to look at where the balance of some of the concerns and interests are of the commissioners. Thank you for that.
B, then Sonia.
I guess, we got a little bit, there were some questions that were put forward in our packet that are those ones that staff would like us to weigh in on, and they're on page nine, like, first one is, is the addition of an economic risk ownership attributed desirable to commissioners? There were six bullet points that were questions that.
Yeah, we put those in there as a way to prompt some discussion. We do have them on some slides, if you would like to look at them. Those two first questions around some of the rankings, I think, would be helpful for staff to get some going forward, if you want to talk about that.
Some of those, Commissioner, are, so in that question, for example, the area of risk, it's really to prompt.
We want to own the generation.
Well, it's part of that, but do you, how much weight, how much consideration should we put on the fact that there's different degrees of risk between these options? And one might by a nose outweigh another one, but one of those may have a very different risk profile. And does that matter? How does that matter to the board? I mean, that's, some of these, we've used in a TBL context, but I could almost go down the list and say, does this matter to the board and to what degree?
And I guess my question on that would be, it's a broad statement, economic risk of ownership. I think that that would need to be parsed out a little bit more, maybe, than all that comes on the later on. Because if you just say risk, it's like, do you mean that the dam's going to fail or that, or is it, is it economic risk that the power generation doesn't hit our targets? What does risk or this bullet point mean to you guys?
Because that could be the risk of generation. It could also be the risk of owning a dam, you know, in extended, someone mentioned the canals, the risk of owning the, and trying to have to maintain. So ownership can be several, there can be several components of ownership.
So do we want, so you get what you have on that first bullet point? You too, because there's six of them.
Can we stick with these just real quickly? So the economic risk of ownership, this is something that the project team has been thinking about as well. So Commissioner, who put this in there, was kind of reading our minds. It felt like there was something missing a bit from the attribute table that really gets at sort of that long-term liability of the various options. And so I'm seeing head nods around the room, but I think that sounds like that's something that would be.
I think in the body of the memo, we've got a little bit more specific, like exposure to regulatory change, natural hazards, you know, flood, earthquake, fire, those types of things that, moving a facility you're unexposed to.
Is bullet number six, I'm sorry, is bullet number six kind of weighing into that? Because you talk about, is kind of the point I brought up about if the water keeps declining and the fish are going to win and we make a core, all this money investing in new generation, and then that generation just sits idle. We can't, we can't generate power, we have to scrap it. That, to me, is economic risk. You know, that change in regulatory rates. Yeah, it's because if they, tomorrow, we're done, you know, return to service, and then Thursday, they decide that salmon can't get off the river anymore, you know, another $80 million into something that, you know, generates power.
It makes me think of like Sonia's point about how, I mean, the cost is like one of the foremost things that you're considering, you're all considering. But if there's like a huge risk associated with it and we're looking at the cost component, it might make me think differently about always that we're cost over another, if that makes sense. Feeling qualitative, not so much quantitative, but to me, it'd be really important. I wouldn't want to maybe necessarily go for the least expensive option, knowing that it's the riskiest.
Well, and to that same point, I mean, look at the numbers and the, some of the amount of cost is offset by generation. Just, I think that it's going to be very hard for us to generate as much or all at some point in the future. We're experiencing more droughts, more fires, we're not getting the kind of water that in the short term here. But in the long term, I mean, all of these are based on long-term paybacks. I have no idea what we're going to be going into. Some of the projections that they said of things that would happen due to climate change, that would happen 30 years in the future, are happening now. I appreciate what I think you all have put into the, you know, the numbers and, you know, it's the best guess that we have, but I still think it's probably, we tend to be as a utility, very conservative in what we, you know, what you put out there. as a utility, very conservative in what we, you know, what you put out there, and I still think it's probably not extreme enough to really capture what level of risk there is on the generation capabilities. So I'm, you know, I'm leaning towards, you know, I don't think we'll be able to recover as much on the projects.
So I'd comment on that, too. I don't think we've experienced, you know, I'm old enough to remember when they built Cooper. Now they pulled the plug on it, they're not going to use that water anymore unless, because they'd say generation, like, knowing how it affects, and so they just move around the river. And so we don't have a 50-year history of what that's going to do to flow regimens. But without that, did the Corps of Engineers being able to dictate how much water comes out of that impoundment? Because it's going to be whatever's there, and if they don't impound that water during flood season and runoff season, we know that to Sonia's point, what's going to happen?
The Corps did provide us with their revised rule curve, environmental mitigation that's being required of them. And so we did our best to translate that into a future flow regime, which is different than what we've experienced historically. Our baseline is based on our understanding, based on what, or informed us of what that means for Leberg. So that is our baseline. Now, is that, I think Sonia's point is, is that the end of the story, or are we, what's the future really look like?
Do they give you those updates regularly? Or is it something that we asked for and they gave us special for this consideration?
No, we're fortunate that they do think of us when they're changing their operation. So we are regular participants in their power supply updates, where that, this type of information comes up, and make sure that we're aware of changes on our horizon.
And how often have they changed it and reduced it in the last 15 years?
The recent changes that are fairly dramatic came from a court order. So it's a, it's a pretty dramatic and substantial change, unlike anything they've seen in the past, and is expected to continue that way in the future, although that is, still needs to be worked out through a regulatory process.
Another question, anybody else want to...
I'm sorry, one more thing on the flow. So to Commissioner Carlson's point that we tend to be relatively conservative, we did model flows, assuming that our minimum minstream flows would increase by 500, so up to 1,500. But we are also modeling at this point the 2,000 minimum minstream flow, based on some feedback we've gotten from some of the fisheries community, some of the environmental community around wanting a higher minimum minstream flow, or would be advocating for that if we were to return to service. So more to come on that, I think, in our final report.
Does that change the economics much?
The summertime generation gets affected. High-flow periods, can't use all the water anyway.
Right.
Get into the late summer, the early fall, water availability, that's where it does affect you.
So there's a rise of the highest. A few months out of the year when power prices are highest. And that 2,000 minimum in stream, my understanding is that that's something that we probably see Army's pushing for, right? We likely see, I think, it seems like that there would be an assumption that a big N, yes or no?
So that is why we ran that 1,500 CFS sensitivity, so that's already in the documents, and then we'll also add a 2,000 CFS, so you'll be able to see those incremental impacts.
So doubling the flow in the river currently exists. I know we bought to get from 1,000 to 1,100, and now you're going from 1,100 to 2,000, but your financial models are based on 1,500 in the river.
Sensitivity, so our baseline is 1,000. We have a sensitivity of 1,500, and we'll have an additional sensitivity of 2,000, so we can...
So the cost numbers we see with the revenue offset to return to service and partial return to service are based upon what flow regimen?
Our current flow regimen.
Thousand.
And the Cooper regime, well, pushes a reduced flow at parts of the year.
And I think you could also observe that alternative two is more vulnerable to, because it has a greater environmental, I think, diverse alarm for a longer period of time, so that your ability to argue out of a, industry flow is harder relative to the alternative three, which has a shorter reach. That, you know, a little bit different odds, probably, depending on return to service scenario you're talking about.
More complexity, please.
Can I just, one more point on the flow. So generally, when you go through a settlement negotiation and you're trying to figure out what appropriate minimum minstream flows are, there's a lot of modeling that's done, river modeling that's done. So there's information that we and the other parties would need, that we don't have at this point in time to say what the appropriate minimum minstream flows would be. We're taking some guesses and modeling some different regimes, just so we have a sense of what that range might look like.
I ask you a question about how confident you are about the reliability of this modeling, because I think historically, we've never been through climate change like we're experiencing and now to Sonia's point, I mean, this thing is accelerating a whole lot quicker than people want. And if we're going to do modeling based upon the history, never had the conditions we're experiencing and seeing right on this model.
For me, I think that the hardest thing to capture is the effects of climate change. And so I wouldn't say, and I put this to the panel to say that, you know, I don't know that we've captured that, we've looked at different flows, but it's uncertain.
I think what the modeling would do is tell you what the incremental impact is. What you're saying is what if the baseline changes, even if your incremental impact is small, is that going to be horrible? Sure.
We do have, I mean, some of the anecdotal information around climate change points to the fact that there won't be less water, there will be less snowpack, there will be, tend to be higher in-stream flows in the winter and in the spring, less in the summer under, under most of the, of the region. What that does for a generating resource like Leberg, which is a run of the river, there's no storage, is it pushes probably more generation into the spring and has more risk, that's part of the reason of the economic risk question, puts more risk into the summer. The spring is the cheapest time of year in the Northwest for power, because everybody else is in the same situation. You have, you have a lot of generating resource as opposed to the summer, which is, I think, will continue to become more expensive as we also get hotter and drier summers, less resource, more demand. So we can anecdotally start to put some information and some feelings around that, which is, which is the basis for the risk question. You can say, oh, I see this million, this $19 million number, great. How vulnerable is that number? So we're going to run sensitivities, and part of the question for the board is, and most, I'll say municipal utility boards are pretty conservative, that, when it comes to risk. So we would rather have a number that's, that's a little worse off and certain than a little better and a lot more risky. It's the way that most utility boards tend to operate, but that's the, that's the basis of the question. How much risk do you want to take?
I kind of lost a cue. Did I have somebody over here, I know I got Matt, but John V. and then Matt?
Well, it's, it's for me, the alternative, if we're talking about generating, generation having a generation source, there's, you know, there's this project compared to what alternative, right? There's a whole host of things that we could be relying on for this same 4% of our power that have a lot less associated with ownership, right? I mean, there's just, there are, I guess that's all. To me, it's, it's not, do we have Leberg or do we not? It's, do we have Leberg, and if we don't, what are we going to replace it with? What is, what are the attributes of that? Like, to me, that's conversation, I mean, I had, there's several of us.
And we are going to approach, so if, if the board decides that Leberg will no longer be a generating resource, there's a mechanism to approach BPA. Right now, it's considered a load-serving resource, that we can go through a process with BPA that will provide replacement power access through Bonneville at the tier one level. And that's a process that we've given them a heads up on, but we don't have a direction yet, so we've just rose the subject. There's a, there's a formal mechanism to replace that, and also, under the future conditions, to your point, what are the other alternatives that the IRP might point us to, and what are the risks and benefits of those?
Right, right. If the attributes of low carbon power and ownership and control of some of that power are important, we still, we have a tool to address that if we decide ultimately if this project continues, that's...
John V. When I walked in the door, full decommissioning wasn't really in my mind. Now I have to ask questions about it.
You're welcome.
So if we do full decommissioning, that pulls a lot of the FERC regulations away, correct? So talk to me about what, what are the regulations on, on Peter Creeks, on Cogswell, on Johnson? That's through the state? And what agency at the state? And what kind of requirements are, I mean, do we have to build those to a 500-year flood? Do we have to build those to a 10,000-year flood? I mean, what are, what are we looking at? So give me, give me the, what you think, build Johnson Creek to, because that's going to be the biggest one. It's going to have to go under the freeway, and it's going to go through somebody's property, and it's going to go back to the river, right? We're not, in full decommission, it's going back to, as, as close to what it was originally, right? So talk to me about what you, how you see Johnson Creek being done under a full decommission?
Yeah, I was going to say, ODOT, the rule maker. There's a few, I mean, just like any permitting process, you know, during the construction, you're going to have Army, you're going to have a JPA, a joint permit application to deal with DEQ, various, you know, they want to claim that to be an applicable screen, perhaps, and that's, the Corps is involved, they'll always be involved. The primary constraint there would be the sizing of the Culver Bridge to get that through. And then the constraints on whose property we may need to get a permanent easement on to have setbacks for folks to buy out any properties that would then be in a floodplain that we may recreate that did not exist prior to the canal intercepting the stream. But the largest catalyst in that would be the sizing of the bridge of the Culver, say, to get the stream passed under 126. And then properties that are in a floodplain.
Typically, an ODOT design criteria would be probably not in excess of a 500-year flood.
Minimum 500-year flood, right? That'd be the, that's the going standard right now.
So when we look at that in the slide number, whatever, NPV result breakdown, so that would be the $21 million for stormwater outfalls.
Yes.
And not the $38 million for canal removal. That's, that's, that's taking the berm out, basically.
They all go together. They all overlap. All that we, we, those cost out as just a little bit of a way to itemize, but keep in mind, they're, they're all kind of baked together in some way, shape, or form. We have the canal outfalls and restoring creeks back to the creek are generally captured in that outfall.
And property acquisitions are in there as well.
There is a very bottom as a subitem, correct?
Thank you.
Sonia?
Thank you.
I'm curious on the environmental side, the full decommissioning is really the only distinguisher between the carbon impact, is really the only distinguisher between that one and the stormwater conveyance? Is that because of the truck rolls and such to remove the canal? Is that the reasoning behind that?
The carbon footprint. Yeah, so, right, our internal analysts did a really good job on that, and we looked at that pretty close. The majority of, the majority of the carbon footprint involved in either restoring or removing the construction is going to be the, the cost of the materials. So the concrete and the polymers, if we were to line the canal, are huge. And then the cost of the fuel for the diesel and fuel for construction activities. Those are the primary drivers of the carbon. The more earthwork you're doing, the more, more, translates into more carbon. But that's still weighted a little less than manufactured materials. So any of the alternatives that have manufactured materials in them, creepy, you know, large carbon footprint construction material, has a heavier, a heavier total there.
So why would the, so on here, if we're full decommissioning, be a lot of concrete or materials in the, moving all back to its natural state? So on here, the, it's negative four for carbon footprint for full decommissioning, it's only a negative one for the stormwater conveyance. That was just, it's just confusing to, that that would...
Yeah, that's just, and they're also pro rate of mine cost. So that that analysis was, was put together is basically put in inflated construction cost, and everything kind of is calculated from that. So the cost is a major driver. But you do slice in, you, you know, you do weigh in the cost of the construction materials and the quantities of them.
So it's cost, not the actual footprint? Because it says it's carbon footprint, which to me, I would look at, okay, this one has a bigger carbon footprint, this one has a smaller carbon footprint, and that's how I would weigh that category. Would not do it on the cost of that, because the cost is factored into other areas in the analysis. What you're saying is it's based on cost for that?
Yeah, the overarching analysis on carbon footprint calculations starts with the cost, because generally, the more construction project cost...
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, generally, the more a project costs, the more, the more carbon foot, the more carbon impacts that it has, just based on the sheer volume of earth movement, concrete or steel that's, you know, put into the project.
I have a question about that, that's confusing to me. And also, I guess my question is, what about like the ongoing carbon footprint then of whatever it is that we choose, right? Like that, I was a little confused with that, because even though we have, it's a clean source of electricity, there must be some carbon footprint associated with it if we run that dam, personally, if we didn't. So this, this category is a little confusing.
It is, and we look to clarify some of that on the next, on the next iteration. But we remain silent on the operational aspect of the hydro facility, because it's generally considered really low to not quite zero carbon footprint, because there's, you know, some fuel and pickup trucks and things like that, just that happen, but generally, it's not like running a coal plant or any other industrial facility. So we remain silent on that. And I think that's just my understanding, talking with the analysts, that is kind of the status quo on how you would, you know, analyze a hydro facility's operations. It's pretty much no carbon footprint, is the assumption. It's so small, it's hard to measure, other than to the large construction aspect of it.
Just for clarity, we should probably break out this as construction carbon footprint. And a part of the hypothesis around what you just mentioned about, around hydro, to Commissioner McCray's point, even if we decide to replace that generation, we have a mandate from the board to replace it with carbon pre-generation. So... So the fact that we're generating, running the river hydro in this versus something else, there would be, it would be all, all the same under those scenarios. It's just a matter of, of the type of resources that we would select. So if we would go to market, or we would go to Wyoming and buy a coal plant instead of having Lieberg. So probably specifying on, in this case, that this is.
Construction.
Let's go to the, pretty much the volume of earthwork that you're doing. And if you're going to completely return to construction conditions, you're just moving a lot more dirt than any of us.
We measure the gallons of fuel based on construction dollars. That there's, there's some, I can't recall exactly where we gathered that data, but there's a database on there that basically has a fulfillment for construction dollars per fuel for types of construction. So there's all these categories that you would select. And one thing to caveat on alternative three, the partial return to service, that got weighted a little heavier, even though the cost is lower because it, it's in the industrial realm. So just, there's no category to choose. It's not earthwork, it's not civil, it's not heavy civil. Just because it's building a, a hydro plant, that triggered it to be into the industrial category, and that has a different weighting. So there, even though it's a little bit lower cost, it, it still has, a component of that project had a heavy weighting on the construction carbon weighting for that aspect. It doesn't really appear that way here, just based on the dollars. But there is a part of that project that drilled that, that alternative a little higher than it probably should be. There's just no other selector of type of billing that made more sense than going with industrial. Yeah, there's just charts, you're correct.
So, so they use, so, you know, if you're looking out into the future for a certain amount of time, I mean, once, if we did decommission this, you said yourselves, the likelihood of another project going back up there and being put back in is, is to nil. But if we do one of the other options, we're going to have maintenance there for many, many decades. How long out do these kind of models look in the future for those kind of costs and impacts? I, I only ask this because the environmental category to me, because it only has so few resource, you know, so few line items in there, it just, it doesn't have a very big impact overall. And it was, and because so many of them are just like not moving very much from one another, you know, like, like you were saying, you know, the, the commissioner of C went in there and heavily weighted it, it didn't tip the scales at all, which I was very surprised by because when you think about dam removal on big scale, you think about all of the environmental communities coming together and, you know, for different reasons, being involved in the decision on it. And it's surprising to me that there's so little.
Yes, I would say it's because it's a low-impact hydro project. Definitely a totally different story if you're talking about a dam on the Columbia, high-impact, environmental impact. This is a really low-impact.
And we also, just from a weighting perspective, sorry, we also did a top-three analysis, which kind of gets away from the fact that some of them are more dispersed than others. We just looked at the weighting comparison of the top three that you each picked in the different categories. So we tried to look at that. I would encourage us, on the, on the carbon one, carbon footprint one, it's very confusing to tie that to cost. I, I think when we, when we look at that, we should tie that to the amount of materials, the type of construction, and the amount of earth moved. That'd be pretty, now, if there's indexes that we use to get to that point, great. But it, it comes across as very confusing when we say, oh, this is related to the cost of the construction. Because then it's, that just seems confusing to me. Just need to make sure we're clear about its materials, type of materials, and type of construction that's driving the construction carbon.
Note, there is a table that breaks down the, the metric tons of emissions for construction vehicles versus materials. That was in the October, earlier October memo on June 16. So that will show, and the, the weightings are associated. They're just sequenced, floating to the lowest to the highest based on that. We will get more information on how that analysis was done.
Is, is there a carbon footprint associated with the ongoing maintenance of the facilities that might differ? So if we have no obligation versus we have to continue to patrol and do maintenance, there's a carbon footprint associated with the maintenance that would not be there if we are able to basically walk away.
Before we go much further, schedule-wise, at 6:10, we had a five-minute break scheduled.
Frank, are we going to go?
To me, I kind of perceive we're not going to use the full four hours. And, and any reasons, we've hit them with a ton of them. And they're going to have a little work cut out for them before we do this again. So if you guys want to keep going, you can take a five-minute break. Okay, we'll keep going.
Two questions. Has anything surprised you so far, like with our reading the video or some of the questions that we've asked or things that have come up? Has anything that's surprised you?
I would say I've appreciated all the questions because you, you really provoked some thoughts from us. And, you know, our intent in this whole process is to try to provide you with the full suite of issues, how complicated they may be, right? So that you can consider the trade-offs for our customers. And, and so that's been helpful. I wouldn't, I haven't been surprised by your questions or comments, but you have daylighted some things I didn't think about.
We're good. Great question, Mandy, thank you.
I guess one other one is, you're doing a great job of giving us feedback and giving us information, but are there things that we're not asking about that we should be asking about? Or something that you're thinking like, huh, they haven't brought up this. Or I wish, yeah, I don't know.
I would say not from a technical perspective, and then maybe Frank, you can answer as well. But there are some, you know, the discussions around trade-offs for the customers that I think is, is really imperative to this, this decision for all of you and for us. And some of the questions we put in the memo, we're in attempt to, to start teasing those out. Whether you have similarities amongst yourselves and where there are differences, and then how you might go about reconciling that.
Question. Go ahead, Frank.
Well, you, there are certain things that we're not asking. And so, you know, some of the things, some of the questions that we're asking internally, I think kind of fall into three categories. One is to generate or not generate. So what's, around that decision. The other one is, is to canal or not to canal? Whether you return to service, return to original state? And the third one is to, to dam or not to dam? So those are really big. And, and some of those are tied together through FERC. Maybe some of them, we might be able to lobby for a different answer. But, you know, we're trying to, to kind of look at it from, from those to-do or not-to-do. In some of those things we've asked ourselves, for example, what's the value of the Lieberg generating location? For example, how do you determine the risk? So if you replace it with something that's somewhere else, you introduce a new kind of risk, probably a transmission risk, for example, versus a local control risk. So we're, we're trying to look at, at those three big categories, to this or to this. And, you know, the question around a bridge and is that the right place? Do, are we legally obligated if we take out a dam to provide a bridge? That's a, that's a valid question. Given that there could be another option at the other end relative to the improvement of a road that uses an existing bridge as opposed to replacing that bridge. So we're, we're looking at those three main categories and asking a whole additional series of questions around what are the implications of do this or not to do this? So we're, we're getting some internal, you know, she mentioned, Lisa mentioned the, the additional requirement of, of 2,000 CFS in the bypass reach, you know, what if it goes to 2,500 or, or 3,000? I mean, the, the regulatory environment is not getting easier and it's not getting less stringent. So we're asking, we're starting to ask ourselves on all of these things, what if it goes beyond where we think? And that gets back to the risk question. So, yeah, I think we're, those are just some of the areas I think I would look at as, as pushing on the risk equation and sensitivities a lot more.
Can I jump in the queue? I'll, I'll get you. So two questions. One is on the flow regimen because, you know, I've been bargaining about that for a couple of years now. So when we have 3,500 CFS come down the river and we divert 2,500, now, if we're going to keep 2,000 in there, the productivity of that, I've been told that, that, you know, when we drop incrementally, that the efficiency of the turbines drops proportionately. So if we're going to have a minimum flow in the river of 2,000, there's only 3,500 coming down, can you run the generators at 1,000 or 1,200 CFS in the canal?
So that'll be reflected in our sensitivity. We all, in the 1,500 CFS, we did reflect that. There are months of the year, I think it's October, where there would not be generation expected at the, at the main plant.
So what's the minimum flow in the canal to generate?
I think we're in the 600. I'll, I'll just, you know, another nuance, a different answer to the partial return to service because you would have an opportunity. We, we have fixed units of essentially the same size, that same plant. Knowing that you would have variability in the future, you probably wouldn't do that at the other plants. You can only have a small unit, so you'd be less vulnerable to having to go offline. That'd be a.
Second question is related, maybe Deborah can answer or something. Is this project, have you gone out to the bond market and seen if this is even viable? Because, I mean, if this, to me, if you're asking me to invest in bonds, three of these options don't make any economic sense. And you're funding, you know, can we sell bonds at, at 5%? Because this isn't like a Cougar or a Carman or anything else? Or is this even a bondable project? Because so much of it is, no, it's financially feasible.
That, that, that's a very fair question. Typically, we say we don't like to bond for something that is not creating an asset for us. But we did have discussions, we've had numerous discussions with our financial advisors. We do issue revenue bonds, and this is something that we could issue bonds for.
Okay. A revenue-backed bond instead.
A revenue-backed bond, right, but we're just committing.
Revenue is 15%.
Yeah, it's based on the.
The money will care.
The health of the organization at large as opposed to tied to a asset, which is a little different.
Tom, be. And so if we were to go to, move from service, what would the impact of the mitigation that we have agreed to in the current license?
You're saying in a decommissioning scenario, what happens to the investment that we've already mitigated?
Well, no, I mean, I think there's ongoing mitigation. You know, we have to do Lloyd Knox Park is one of our mitigation things, you know. So a lot of them have been done, but there's been mitigations that we've committed to under the old license. Are we still, if we abandon that license, do we abandon the, our responsibilities for that, those mitigations that were under that license?
All of our major projects under the Lieberg-Walterville license are completely, we do have some ongoing things, but our, our last mitigation effort was putting into a fund. I was here in the audience, think we have one year or maybe two years left on that, three years left on that. And then that, then that's complete. So again, presumably, that would be part of a negotiated settlement for, for a decommissioning scenario. I wouldn't say they're lost, there's lost benefit from those. So we've done those things and benefit has been gained from that.
Other question, the comments. Back-up time?
Yeah, one more question on, on outreach. I know, well, one, our team has done a really remarkable job of seeking feedback and collecting feedback. And I know we're going to receive some of that shortly. My understanding, or at least maybe it's my observation, I guess, is that when we look at the pool of rate payers in Eugene, we haven't seen as much engagement, conversation. You know, it's just, project is far enough away, people aren't really thinking about it or are less likely to engage in it. And I wonder if there are any tools left that we haven't tried yet to engage more of our local customers in this question that we're wrestling with. I think that would be valuable. I value the conversations that we've had in this room with, with folks from, you know, from the Eugene area who are trying to wrestle this with us. And if there's more of that, that I think that would be helpful, especially as we think about the rate impacts. And then, yeah, the other one is, I guess, I would, I would ask my fellow commissioners, as I did earlier. I, I feel like targeted engagement with the tribal governments in this area that have an interest in this project would be really valuable. So I guess, I guess I would move that we ask staff to put together a program of more targeted engagement. Or maybe that's just head nods.
Proceedingly, I think that we're going to, I think December decision is way big-time aggressive in, in my personal opinion. I always have this philosophy, better late than wrong. And given the fact that we have 88,000 customers, how many we heard from? And this is not a desirable commodity. This is a required commodity to live in this particular geographic area. I think we're probably going to do some more outreach. And I, I'm seeing a head nod over there.
I'd like to see us reach out to the, the people that are going to come to the settlement agreements. We, not just.
And the rate payers too.
And the rate payers, yeah, absolutely. I mean, for me, repairs don't come until you make a vote, and it impacts them in some very significant way. There's very few people who are special that pay attention that, you know, but by and large, you're not going to get the thing unless we do something more aggressive to get people here.
Well, you know, the majority of this board has not experienced even a rate hike. That we, we, staff has done such a great job that we haven't raised rates in, what, many, many years? And I, yeah, but electricity is, you know, five times your water bill. But you, you know, I, I got it finally when I saw people come to the podium and say, three bucks a month is a huge difference to me. And I couldn't relate to that, and I don't mean to be arrogant, but I couldn't relate to that until I saw people truly emotional when they came to the podium and said, this makes a big difference. You don't have to do this. They were compassionate, they were mad. There's a whole range of emotions come to the podium when this happened. So I, I want to make sure that we do this right and that we listen to everybody. Because like I say, we, we've got 88,000 customers, we have 250,000 people that serve. And so, do that, Mandy?
I agree with you that I think December is aggressive and optimistic. And I know the reason that we had targeted December is because we just didn't know what the makeup of the board would be, if there would be any changes. But that's something that is very strange happens. We're going to have the same for the next several years. And there's, we have so many unanswered questions and so many unknowns that I, I hope that we would not drag this out forever, but at least take the time that we need to move it.
I mean, I know that we had scheduled that we were going to go and talk to neighborhood. At the very least, I think that we should go through that process to get people here. And we had that scheduled to begin of the next year. And let's go through that process at the very, very least to get outreach into the community.
You want to go first?
Yeah, can I just make a quick comment on the, on the public outreach? So we do have the, the survey or the comment form that was specific to the Lieberg project. We also have our more recent broader customer survey that we can glean some insights that will. will inform some of the values of our broader customer base that did not respond specifically to the Lieber survey. If we were going to go out to solicit more input, it would be helpful for us to know what questions you really need answered and might change your opinion or change the course of your thinking.
Yeah, I was just going to leverage a little bit what Commissioner Carlson said, and potentially propose something that Bonneville uses regularly, and that the comment that Mr. Carlson made was until you make a decision, you don't get any feedback. One of the approaches that we could do is we could go through this process as we are now. What we are hearing is more direct outreach to certain groups, whether that's people who are involved in settlement decisions, or the commercial world, or even to in-house people. We could come up with what we might refer to as a preliminary record of decision or preliminary recommendation, which would be, here's what we think the direction should be. Now, instead of saying that, oh, that's the final direction, use that as a mechanism to go out to the world to say, what do you think of this? And if you just go out and say, what do you think about Lieberg, you're going to get a lot of, well, you know, you're going to get more questions back than you get answers, until you actually take something out there that is tangible. So what I might recommend is that potentially by the end of this year, instead of saying, this is the decision, we say, this is what we think it should, we would recommend, but then provide some comment period or customer feedback period, where we can shop that around and get additional feedback, whether that's from commercial, other settlement parties. So it's a little bit of a, you know, not just the open question, but here's what we think it should be. And we can provide that as a staff recommendation, we can then, you know, commissioners can say, we love it, we hate it, go back to the drawing board, or hey, this is something I think we can take out and actually get some meaningful feedback from. Because I do fear that if you don't have something that we're taking out that is sort of a proposal, then we're not, we're just going to, that loop is just going to spin. And so that's what I would recommend, is maybe modify it to, by the end of this year, we have something that we can take out to the public as a potential solution, as a potential solution that we solicit feedback on.
And that makes sense to me, and that's kind of road that I thought we were going to be going down in the first place. I didn't think we were going to say, this is a record of decision and we're going that direction. I felt that we were going to give staff a path to go down and start really digging in and saying, okay, this is the path we're going down, and start running your scenarios and doing this, and see if something really jumps up that says, whoa, this was the wrong path, right? You know, because that, until you really get into digging into it and saying, we're going decommission, and this is what it's going to be, boom, 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 settlement parties can look at it and say, no, I will never sign on to that. Okay, well, we've got an issue there, or, you know, it has to be, you know, ODOT says, no, we want a million-year flood, things like that. Then we can come back and do it. Again, I kind of like what you said, getting to that point by December, I still think is maybe a little bit aggressive. I think there is some outreach that we can do to our customers, and help them make the decision. I mean, I, something that some staff could come to the Chamber of Commerce and tell their Local Government Affairs Committee where we are in this reaction, just so that they can hear that voice, and whatever else ones that we can get out to. But I do feel that there's a need to make something at some point. It may not have to be December, but I would say.
I don't, I'll just, I'll speak on behalf of the entire team here. If we think there's major missing components, by the time December rolls around, we're going to say there's some missing components and we need to fill those gaps. The better right, what's your phrase again?
Better late than wrong.
All right, thanks. We want everybody, including the commissioners, to feel comfortable and be proud of this work, and it's incredibly complicated and intertwined work. If we don't think it's ready, we won't present it as ready. We might say that here's the things we're comfortable with, and here's the things we're not. But we, I think we still want to shoot for as much as we can by December, and fill in as many blanks as we can. There might be some things that we still need to take a deeper dive on, and that's okay.
Sonya, the Minnie?
So for me, I don't know that we will, we may get more from the public that, you know, may change our minds or, you know, make us think about things a different way, but more, I want the public to understand what we are grappling with, and I feel like that's going to take effort for us individually, going out and meeting people where they're at. I know that, you know, we've done upriver a lot, we've had meetings here, but that's not where people are. It's us going to individual meetings, Rotary, you know, whatever those groups are, the neighborhood associations, and going to where they normally go and being a part of that process. That's the piece that I feel is missing. And, you know, to the extent that we can boil this down more in the next few months, but maybe not pick something, but for me, I think, I just, I want people to understand that, you know, we went through this full process. Look at all of the different types of considerations we have to take into account as we're making this decision. It's not an easy one, there's, you know, there aren't a lot of winners, and when we have to vote, and every single one of these has a very big cost, and that big cost is going to be borne by the entire, you know, customer base, that's when people are going to come, but they're going to come no matter what. I mean, no matter what we do, there are going to be negative impacts that people are going to be, you know, we're going to face. But I just, I want people to understand what we had to do to get to this place, because that's the way that they, you know, we trust with them, they understand why we did it. I mean, we're a public utility, we're not a private utility, we don't just care about the cost. But we do care about the cost, because it's not that we're trying to make profit, it's that we're trying to protect our customers. So, you know, those are the things that, when we have to make this vote, I want people to understand that that's how we arrived, whatever decision we arrive at. So, you know, I think if we could brainstorm the list of the groups, and then really go out and each of us set up those appointments and do presentations and have these real conversations with them, that we're going to have a much better situation when it does come time to vote.
Minnie?
For me, the big piece that's missing is whether or not FERC would let us re-license. I know we talked about that, we won't know about that for a while, but is there any chance that we could reach out and get some indication? Because I feel like, for me, it would, maybe for some of us, it would inform a lot if FERC were to say, like, actually, we're not going to be able, we're not going to wrap in your relicensing project, you have to do this with the current license that you have.
Oh, you're talking about whether, if we started this process, we could
Extend the
amend the license to, yeah.
And with Walterville and all of that. To me, that is just such a huge piece of this, that I'm not sure that I would be able to make a fully informed decision without knowing that. I also understand that, you know, you can't just call up FERC and email their helpline and say, you know, this question, but it is really such a big piece of this equation for me, that I don't know how I'm going to, I don't want us to, like, put a whole lot of effort into something that's not even a possibility.
I don't think we've brought anything to the board that's not a possibility. We, these are all, have no reason to think that there's a deal killer in any of these. They all have lots of uncertainty, this is exactly what they look like at the end of the day, but we did weed out, from the brainstorm session, some things that we did think had some deal killers working in there, but none of these four fall in that category.
So like, to the best of your knowledge, you think that if we went for any of the return to service, that we would be able to extend the license and wrap Walterville?
There's multiple ways we could go about it, I do think that there's a path forward through that.
I think that's part of the reason we looked at those two options as being, what is it, 327, the six, as part of their scenario, was that to do that, you actually have to extend the life long enough to get some potential return. So there's a few subcomponents of FERC's oversight, but I don't have any issue with the fact that FERC is going to allow us to go down these roads. It's what are the conditions to go down? What toll do we have to pay to go down those different roads?
I wasn't answering, I have another comment, so go ahead, finish it.
I was just going to say, my only other comment is, you know, before I said that I agreed with Matt about the stormwater conveyance, but I also want to say that, like, if staff came and that was like your strongest recommendation and you laid out why, I'm not set on, I'm really not set on any of these, and I still very much have an open mind. So something I'm really looking forward to is when staff do weigh in and know what you're thinking.
Right. I kind of get the sense that people are feeling like they're driving off a cliff here, so I feel like we're just kind of like more like going around a bend, but can you kind of remind us of the process? So for each option, what happens next?
In terms of if we were to choose alternative one, what would happen after that?
Yeah, because I think each one of the options lay out the next, you know, in 10 years, it's going to be like this, but in the next couple of years, things will happen. What's going to be different? What's going to be the same? What's our opportunity to adjust? And did any of the options have more opportunity to adjust? You know, some of those kind of, what it might look like if we decide in December, what's going to happen in January, you know?
Yeah, so I'm going to look to the panel to please interject if you have a different opinion, because there's no prescribed, necessarily prescribed path forward. But whatever alternative we choose, I would say that, starting next year, then we would need to start answering the question around, any of the, so just back up, any of the alternatives will require some sort of action with FERC that will either amend or surrender the license, because the license is a combined license between Lieberg and Walterville. When we take any sort of action, we also need to have a sense of where we would want to go with Walterville. So the way I had this in my mind was that we would be deciding on a path forward, a likely path forward for Lieberg, and then we would start thinking about Walterville so that when we actually go to take action with FERC, we have some sort of proposal to start working through with us, with presumably a suite of settlement parties. All of that stuff is going to take, I remember, many, many years, quite honestly. So we do have, there's feasibility assessments that need to be done, so we do have some time, nothing changes on the ground in the very short term, short term being 10 years-ish, with the exception of us doing some near-term risk reduction measures to ensure the safety of the canal to convey the stormwater in the short term. I want to pass it to Mark.
Yeah, I agree with that, I think so, too. I think, one, I do know we want to talk to FERC DC next, and we want to do that, I think, as soon as we're getting an indication from the board. We didn't, we wouldn't want to go to FERC DC and say that we want to re-license when the board actually wants to decommission, so you're getting your feedback was a really important process, so be able to go to DC and say, here's what our utility is thinking, you know, giving them our understanding of what we would like to do, and then get their feedback on future all, even before we know necessarily for sure what we're doing with Walterville, we would want to get their feedback so that we start counting for that, our steps before we
I want to add, when it comes to, just a small piece of, if we could fill the Lieber with Bonneville Tier 1 power, that process is something that we probably take months to adhere to, and we would need to probably move that around 2023. So keeping that in mind, we need to And, well, the criteria that Bonneville has, or the statute is, is that we would be able to generate on this site. So that's the decision.
Well, I'd like to chime in, but I agree with Minnie more, I couldn't make a decision on return to service without, you said 50 to 100 million bucks, we're spending other people's money. I totally get what Sonya's saying. I can't make that decision on service if you have that variable. I appreciate your cost test from everything, in the timelines I've just heard, 60% of this board turns over, and could you imagine commissioners that didn't have this background having to grapple with you, having to deal with this? And, you know, with this decision, down that, say, okay, we go to one of these options, and then you start vetting it and fleshing it out with FERC, negotiating and talking and everything, and it goes sideways, you got to start all over. And remember that, for the people, you have no idea, or level of expertise that they're going to replace this group of people if they replace it, but that it's happened before. I think we all have to keep that in mind, that this group of people may change, change in 24 months, fast, fast, with priorities and different directions and different understanding, so how long it takes just to learn the acronym. All that in mind, but I myself cannot make a decision on return to service until I know some of the economic parameters of what, you know, strength, whether you define it, define it for me, Walterville, another 50 million bucks on any return to service option. Any return to service option, 100 million dollar variable before the numbers we have in front of us. That's my problem. I can't make a decision with 100 million dollars. Get down there, and how you get us there, or at least get me there, I don't know.
I got an idea, where would you like to go?
You know, Frank, I voted for myself today. I really regret it.
I think that, like, the purpose, want to come to the board, we're going to ask you some commitment for some investment over a period beyond what you're going to come and say, we would like to spend, we're going to have to spend 250 million dollars at present value to accomplish and set a direction and do something. We know that in order for the board to feel comfortable with whatever we're asking for, that we need to cross our Ts, dot our Is, remove the variables, so that this board is comfortable with saying, yeah, I'm comfortable with that direction, knowing very well that the reality of oversight of a public utility is that there is different governance. I think that as a management group and as a team, we want to be able to come to the board and say, this is what we think is the best direction, and that challenged and understood, and if there are areas where we think the variables are too wide, we need to own that before we come back. So, in fact, we were talking about Walterville the other we were talking about Walterville the other day, and we understand there's a $50 million option and a $100 million option, and that just isn't, hasn't been reflected yet to the board. So we're hoping that we can come back to the board with enough detail that there, there might be some public pieces of this that need to be tested. If that's okay, but we want to be able to bring our expertise to the board and say, this is what we think should happen. And I then have a process that allows good vetting of that.
Senator Brown alluded to the costs of Walterville under relicensing. Do we know what the cost would be if we just surrender both licenses?
If you have to decommission? Well, if we were to surrender the license in its entirety, we can decommissioning both. I mean, there might be an option out there that somebody could purchase them, but I don't know how likely that would be.
So we have to go through that process of, is there anyone else who wants them? And the answer's probably no.
The question for me is, and it's been, it's been alluded to in the past, that, that decommissioning Walterville is a easier process because the, it's not as, as high of a canal, it doesn't, it doesn't cross roads. So, I mean, it's less costly, or do we know what the cost is to, to decommission?
So you'll see that next, in the next few weeks, but essentially it was about $50 million to decommission and about $100 million to upgrade for a new license. So Walterville is cheaper across the board for either, you know, licensing or decommissioning than Walterville is because it's got different variables. Excuse me, cheaper than Lieberg.
I do want to caveat that where we did not have a good consultant group drill down on those numbers exactly. We were using their good work to make some interpolations close and it'll get us a good decision point in the, when we start to look at that closer, we will have refined the numbers that we provide you in the next iteration that you'll see.
So I guess timeframe, we're talking 10 to 15 years, license expires in 2040. So theoretically, we'd be able to keep running Walterville for better part of the existing license. And so
Yes, only if we don't return Lieberg to service correctly. If we return Lieberg to service, we have to get a new license.
Any of the, all four of the options require some sort of licensing action by FERC?
And if we return either to service, for leftman or full service?
There's multiple ways we could go about it.
Decouple them.
We could decouple them. We try to look at two separate licenses. There's.
It's probably, I think where you're going with this is under, under scenarios and probably almost any scenario, if, if you start messing with the license, you're going to impose new requirements on Walterville. I think that's where you were going.
That's true. If we do anything to generate electricity on Lieberg, we're going to have to get a new license. And we get a new license, then.
Any of the things require, any of the options require a license amendment because they're licensed together, that would also be the Walterville license and to Frank's point, potentially some additional regulatory requirements.
Something that I hope happens, whichever decision we make to, I hope that we can work in with FERC goals. Some of these decisions obviously impact them on others, but any one of these impacts them up there, potentially the construction, the noise, get rid of the dam, the power station. So I just hope that we have some kind of plan to keep working with them. About this decision that we're making, there'll be plenty of people who keep really paying attention, but the river, this was in their backyard or front yard. So we need to work with them to our ownership and help work through this, I should say.
So on the side of the dam piece, looking at that kind of, the option, I'm curious to see if there is any interest or ability or precedent for the Army Corps of Engineers having interest in taking the dam and keeping it for water here or for use in the community. I don't know what their entire charge is. So I don't know if that's something that's under their purview, but I'd really love to find out more about if that's going to be approached.
Based on my personal experience, working at the county and other agencies and things along the way, every agency's likely to pass away assets that they have to maintain. So I would be highly doubtful that anyone, the park service or anyone in the state would want to come in and, and own that and operate that for the pleasure of others for low fees or, or no fees for boating or what have you, or in the core that I don't believe goes into their mission.
Correct. The core's primary mission in terms of their dams is flood control. Lieberg does not operate as a flood control facility, so.
I think where Commissioner Carlson is going, and I, I agree with her on this, is that we start to look into this to dam or no dam or canal or no canal, some of these are not necessarily as discreet as leave it or tear it down, that we have to explore sort of other long-term options, which could, could include third parties, it could change of ownership. Now, the core may not be the best example since it's not a flood control facility, but we also have to understand the use of, the use of that asset. And if you take that asset out, all those uses go away. And that, that, we also need to look at this from a, are we replacing the uses and how are we going to replace the uses? And that, so for example, it acts as a bridge at the moment for transportation. So we can't just look at this, oh, it's a dam. In essence, it's a transportation asset. So we have to look at it from a use perspective, not just a, what its name is. So and we might have to get creative in our exploration.
Other than John?
So when I look at the, you know, the three big buckets, you know, environmental, we kind of covered. It's a very low-impact project in general. So surprised that taking it out isn't that, you know, that car raising. So that one kind of, you know, falls down for me, which means, you know, we could have the dam or not. Okay. So then when I look at it to dam or not to dam in terms of the social aspect, I think that's the one that has the biggest impact on the social perspective, other than, you know, the, I mean, well, it is coupled with it because if you take the dam out, you lose the wildfire response, you have a higher cost, you have, it looks like there's more, well, and you have the, if you, if you choose to not have the canals, that kind of handles more of the public safety aspect, because either way we have to shore the canals. But the, and then there's the recreation piece and the fish hatchery. So those are the biggest kind of categories under that, that social piece. It seems like if we kept the dam and there was a way to make that happen, now again, I don't know, start to piece out. So I'm really looking forward to have that next piece of how it parses out into the cost. But if we were looking at between a partial return to service and cost and the stormwater conveyance, but we could keep the dam, maybe there's the ability to find some, you know, find a middle ground there that kind of helps the upriver community. The environmental aspect is kind of a lower deal and it's the lowest cost one from, in all of them, maybe even if we add the dam back in. So it seems like that might kind of be the best of all worlds, depending on what the cost is there. So I'm just trying to think about, is there a path forward that's maybe the least worse for all of those different categories? And that's what I see.
You helped me clarify that, so I understood it. So I heard partial return to service.
No, I said, so if you look at, if you look at scores.
Stormwater conveyance?
Yeah, stormwater, like stormwater conveyance.
And there'd be no generation.
Because it has the lowest cost, which is the biggest, you know, economic piece of it for us. But the biggest social impact is really the impacts from taking out the dam. And the environmental one is unhandled among them because none of them are really that big of an impact anyway.
Clarify for me. Thank you. John?
And maybe others see it differently. I'm just.
So one of my questions would be, we've got to put all this money into this thing at, at some point, right? So if we, and we're looking at, let me, let me do return to service scenario. We're looking at return to service to either one of those, we have to put a buttload of money in. If we do stormwater conveyance, we have to put money in. If we do full decommission, we have to put a lot of money in. If we did either one of the return to services and got the license, is that, in our numbers, we're looking at the power generation that we could get from that, the NPV. How much power are we going to do? Is there another way to look at that that minimizes our risks that, okay, we've got to put a bunch of money into this, we're going to put a bunch of money into this and make it licensed through 2076? Is it a saleable asset at that point rather than a power generation return on investment, which takes away some of our risk? Where we say, okay, we got to put all this money in there one way or another. It's going to cost us this. We're, the power we're going to generate from, back from it is going to be $80 million. We could sell those water rights and the generation of a new generation facility for $50 million and walk away. Is there somebody, are there people out there that would be looking for carbon-free generation and the wrecks that are involved and a saleable?
First of all, it's because it's legacy header, it doesn't have wrecks. It is carbon-free. So just to, just clarification. Walterville and Lieberg, the profile of their cost versus output, I would almost describe it that you're wrapping money around every kilowatt hour that you sell. So it's, it's basically a negative value asset. If you were to totally strip away and just say, sell it for its operating cost, and if someone were to look at that, we're still left with the stranded cost, so we're still paying a large, a large asset. And the, probably the, the only way I could see that being a viable path going forward, and we'll have to look at this a little bit more, is if we were to couple it with carbon spend. Because right now, it would be, we'll pay you to take it, kind of thing.
We'll build you a new plant, you give us.
Which, which, you know, I, I guess you would go, why, why would we invest the money to, to pay someone else to take it, right? That's, that's.
Because we got to invest the money one way or another.
Well, yeah, to me.
Take away our long-term risk.
It's the incremental investment of power generation, which is, which is at issue there. That's, that's a very speculative statement, what I just said. I, I, you know, there's, there is value in carbon because of its shapeability, you know, which is a little different than Walterville and Lieberg. If we add up all of them, it's a lot of money that's being invested those, to your point. I, we'll give it a little bit more thought.
Other questions or comments? Circle wagons and make final closing comments? Anything from staff that you, you guys need?
We only got through the first couple.
Only got two of them. Well, we actually, we got one of six, I think, but one of the, one of six. And so if you guys want to go through the bullets, go ahead and present them.
So these are the only two real, you know, it would be nice for us to have some, these are the only ones that are like, what do you want us to do with these attributes? The other ones were just, they were prompting questions and in reality, you ended up getting to the basis for those questions in the course of your discussion. And I think what I'm hearing is for the economic risk of ownership, which we will, we will add that. And then the second one is, you know, splitting the recreation component up into subcomponents. And this is coming from the, the public comments that we have received are split. There's a large population, particularly upriver users, who really value having the lake there as recreation. And then we started hearing more recently, over the last two months, from a number of groups that would value having a free-flowing river. And so splitting that attribute up to just, so that it's a little bit more granular, I think would be helpful for, for us and it might allow you to, to wait accordingly. And same for trail recreation. The recreation component just had a number of things in there. And if you look at, well, okay, it takes away lake recreation, but it adds river recreation, you could end up sort of evening out those scores to a neutral effect and not being able to value those separately. So that would be my proposal. Anything out there?
Maybe then Tony?
I would just say, I mean, to me, recreation is one of those categories where it's kind of equal, one's is kind of equal, because it just depends on what you'd like to do to that degree, right? Some people love to be able to go boating and some people really want that river free flowing. And so I feel like there will be some recreation, no matter what it is that we do. It's not like we're going to drain the river, so there's not going to be anywhere. So to me, it doesn't really matter that much. I think recreation's important, but I think that it just depends on what your values are, what you like to do, but it will be.
I was going to say, you know, it's an attempt to try to get at whether commissioners want to parse that out. That's the, then what we've gotten, most of the public comments on are around, the majority of them, or at least many of them are around the recreation component, either lake or not. And so if you as commissioners want an ability to weight that out separately, it might be helpful for you. If you want it all thrown together, then we would adjust the scoring because when we put this original attribute scoring in, we were, we were weighting the, the impact of losing the lake. That's reflected in this scoring, but the, that potential benefit of gaining a free-flowing river is not necessarily reflected. And so it might, we would alter the scoring if we were to keep it as such.
That might parallel with Commissioner Schlossberg's thought to do another round of that you had mentioned before, you know, one more attribute to weigh or two more attributes.
I'm curious. I mean, for me, I appreciate that that's what people like to do and that that's what people are reaching out about because that's what I'm looking at up there. But for me, if you're going to readjust this, then it would kind of also have to impact the economic component up there. Because a lot of the, the recreation side, I think people care about the recreation side of it because that's what draws people into that area and they spend money at the businesses and they can also act, I mean, maybe I'm wrong there, but I, I do think that that's a lot of what, and people like, you know, living up there and they have vacation homes and other things up there because they like doing these things. So if there's, you know, different types of it that really sway it so that there's no recreation, one thing that, for me, if you're going to adjust the scores, I think you, if that really does sway it, then it also. then I would also expect some look at the economic side to see if it changes that. But if it doesn't. And then to this kind of same point about distinction between river versus lake, the property values. It was interesting to me because I, I think that there's probably very different view on the property values that are surrounding the lake versus property values that are near the canal that are at risk of all kinds of other safety hazards. So it's, it's interesting to me to have those kind of all lumped together because one of them has a very dire consequence for safety. Whereas one is, you know, I have this beautiful lake home and if the lake goes away, there's a river, yes, which is still nice, but I can't do the same kind of things that I have a river. Having that, if this is split up more, it might also be beneficial to split up the, what we wanted to think about the detrimental effects or positive effects of decisions on those areas. If others agree.
Probably a different opinion on value. Just because you probably could make an argument that a riverfront home is worth more than a lakefront home. I mean, because of the amenity, I mean, that's just all in the eyes of the holder. So getting to the subjectivity of that, what are we doing? I mean, our mission is to provide affordable, reliable power.
I'm just saying there's a difference between the canal.
Yeah, but there's difference physically, but whether or not there's a difference economically, it's no different than. I'm not saying to me it's mission creep, but you know, we're going to get rid of Polichew reservoir. And a side product of that thing that we did, now there's astronomy there. And if we turn around and say, okay, we can't tear it down because we have a strong reserve on clear nights. I mean, we got to, to me, I have to be careful. I, I would like to just leave it in recreation. I don't know what river recreation is. I don't know how what we're doing is going to affect river recreation. Somebody's going to have to tell me.
Presumably increase it, you wouldn't have a barrier, so.
So you're just, you're just taking that out, okay? And so we're good, but then the Lieberg boat landing is, becomes non-functional because it's no longer lakefront. And that's, we just put it, I'm just, this whole thing.
You got the five rapids going down.
We can, we've got a lot of things, taking out one impediment. You don't know what kind of a river condition you're going to create when you take the dam out. So there, I mean, there are just so many things and, and, you know, I, I'm focused and I'm really focusing on the cost and how this affects the people because like you say, it's regressive. People make less money than others. This commodity costs the same per kilowatt as it does for high-income as well income and it affects them terribly in this, you know, talking about the biggest expenditures this utility's ever made. I, I can leave them.
It does give enough reach out. And if that's what we're getting the most amount of feedback from the community, I guess I would like to see at least the breakdown of it personally, just to give that non-people.
Let's hold group.
Do you want to break it into three or leave it at one?
Fine, leaving it at one.
Ambivalent, either way.
I would break it out. I think the, the resolutions.
Break it down, break it down, ambivalent. That's okay, break it down.
So I, I'm going to move on to process and kind of figure out a timeline of, of how this is going to, going to work. So it sounds to me like staff's going to provide a memo third or fourth week of November, which will have a recommendation. Okay, so we get staff recommendation, end of November. Do we have a December meeting and a work session or just a December meeting?
It's just planned for the December meeting.
So.
Can we double check that we actually have time on the regular November agenda, regular discussion?
How much time? Because we're going to be getting new information, right? Or at least updated, refreshed information. It seems to me.
So. This goes back to, this goes back to my own, we have processing things. And we all have lives beyond Eugene Water and Electric Board, five people sitting at this table. So just to be able to process this information, I mean, we got our packet last night at 8:45.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You know, but that's, that's not fair to us. It's not fair to the decision-making process. And if we're getting a, a packet the third week of November and are being asked to weigh in on a quarter of a billion-dollar decision in a week or 10 days, that doesn't work for me. I'm sorry. I would be able to ask a lot more questions once I see that package and say, how, how come you feel this way? How come you feel that way? But I, there's no way that I'm going to be ready to give direction on a path forward at an early December board meeting. I'm just, I'm just putting that out there. Especially one of this consequence, you know? If it's a consent calendar thing that comes, you know, five hours before a meeting and it's to buy a backhoe, okay, I can live with that type of a decision on short notice. But I just, I don't know what the rest of this commission is, but that's, I just wanted to put that out there.
Man, I said a year ago, I've, I've got an annual vacation. I take, I'm not going to be physically present for that meeting. I'm going to try and do it by, well, but, you know, I'm going to do what I have to. I've already talked to Sonia and she's going to take the meeting. If I can't do it, I mean, I'll be prepared, but you know, we've got Thanksgiving in there, that's 40 all in. And, you know, so I too understand that. And you know, I've, I've still got a lot of questions, not, not that, there's going to be more questions when you respond. You're going to give us an answer and I'm going to have two more questions.
President Brown?
I, I would propose that we, we could put forth our recommendation and not have a, not have a agenda item in December for action. I think this may be something where there's, there's some guidance items for our, I mean, as long as the board needs to be comfortable with it. I mean, if we put forth a recommendation and the board asks questions, great. Maybe we need another month to process it and follow up on additional questions. That's, that's fine. And I think what we want to do is we want to get something that's useful for the board that's a recommendation. If, if that takes a certain degree of time to process, we're okay with that. So I don't, I don't expect, in fact, we'll modify the agenda. It won't be an action item in December. We can refer to it as guidance and discussion. And then at some point, the board will be comfortable with an action. And so, but we would like to put forth the recommendation and then whatever processing time you need to feel comfortable with.
And it's still, I mean, I, earlier we said we wanted to reach off to like the main, you know, we have a major customer, used to have a major customer lunch and, you know, we're 20 to 30 of our largest customers. We talk to them about trends and everything else. We have done that for three or four years at least. And I mean, that's a good venue to talk to the big people that write the big checks, but also to go to the small business owners, to go to Chamber of Commerce and people like that. We do all of that in 30 days. That's a Herculean task. We can't even get on the, my neighborhood meeting each quarterly. And I've got three minutes on an extra agenda, three minutes. So.
You're going to have to talk fast.
I'm going to have to talk fast.
Yeah, and we have a, we're looking at several major customer events this spring.
So that's the spring.
Right, no, I, I think what we want to do is to provide as solid of a recommendation or path as we can to the board to be able to narrow down the questions and the outreach. And until you have something that you can go out to the public with, and that's probably, I don't know what you call it, Commissioner Carlson, a pared-down version of the trade-offs. There, there isn't a magical line that's drawn on December 31st. I mean, other than our own goal that we wanted to be a certain place for some good reasons that have changed, we'll, we'll allow the board lots of leeway in understanding what needs to be done next, so.
Questions or comments before we adjourn?
The other comment I would have would be to tell other commissioners. How do you see this vote going? I mean, right? We've all have our, I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, is it going to be a three, two, four, one, five, oh? Knocked it, you know, first round ballot, second round ballot type of thing? I, I don't know.
Well, I guess, I, I think this is a very well-functioning board and I really appreciate that everybody shares their opinions and all agree with one another. And I think maybe the process with our partners where we hash out the agreements, where you say like people kind of sit around the table until you come up with something that like sounds the, the best. I'm hoping that that's what happens because we all have unique perspectives and we all have our, our values. But, and this is so complicated. I guess I just have faith that this board will be able to come up with something that we all kind of work together, craft, given what you give us, obviously. But I, I think that we can.
I'm going to remind everybody that we all, four of us represent eight geographic areas of the community defined by wards. You represent all of them plus de facto upriver. Then I, I look at my charges to reflect the values and desires of my constituency. Totally different than yours. Totally different. And so we all, I mean, to, to make sure that we, we let that and respect that, especially in these times, not to, you know, if people have personal opinions and values, you know, I, I interjected all my personal values in this. It would be totally different than what the constituents of Ward's four and five would want. So I have to keep that in mind when we do this. It's not my values, it's the collective values of the people that put us in this position. Try and reflect that. And that's why I think outreach is very, very important to do that. And I guarantee you that Matt probably has a different group of constituents than I do. And we, we all, we've all lived here long enough to know the uniqueness of Eugene and the differences and geographic divides and things. So I think we can get there, we can get there. And, and don't be afraid to take issues with it. I mean, I, I don't take anything personal. Go down three, two, four, one, it doesn't matter, five oh would be great. But if you haven't compromised what you believe your representation is, then you've done your job. But I think we, we have a policy that says that if you're on the short end of a vote, once that vote's done, then you support the majority. And so whatever it is, where we come up with, it, it is. But I think that's in our board policies is that, that we do that. So we don't go out and say, this is terrible or anything else. We just, that's the way, that's the way it works. We've made a ton of decisions, a ton of decisions, and they've not opened five oh. And, and the next day we show up and we do it and we're going to have to do that. It's just going to be a much heavier lift this time. So I really appreciate the way that this is working right now. That I think, you know, having been on a board that was totally dysfunctional for a while, I, I just want to tell everybody that I appreciate, not on the board, but the staff and, and the way we're, we're doing this. We're doing the best we can and I think it's going to be tough to appease everybody. I know we can't, we can try, we can try and, and we'll have to do the best we can. And if people take issue with it, take it personally.
Let me ask you a question about, see, you said that you, you know, you have to take into consideration the people that you represent, right, and what, what their interests are. And, and I, I understand that. But to me, that is always, can only be a piece of this because they don't have all of, they don't have four hours sitting in a room asking every single question. You know, if you just say, do you want a dam or not a dam? That's the bumper sticker and you can't, you know, that's what most of our constituents would be able to answer. So yes, I, I give my award two and three when I feel their values are. But it's only a piece of it.
Oh, absolutely, right? Absolutely. They do, they wouldn't have the, the depth of knowledge, but if you have, represent a group of people that really strong in environment, but also represent people that don't have the economic resources that another group of people does. I mean, I'll admit it, I live in a, in a couple of wards that where we have the highest per capita income and all this other stuff. But that doesn't mean I'm just going to go on affordability. Do my best to reach out and talk to the greatest diversity of people I can in that, that geographic area. That's part of my job. I get it, it's, it's not, not into the weeds, it's the, you know, macro. Cost is really important to a certain group of people. And you weigh that in the minutia.
For me, when I make, I mean, even though it's really easy to see this constantly with, you know, little blips and bumper stickers that really raise people's hackles, part that I vote on is something that I can defend. I thought that my constituents and the community came up both, you know, because of this factor, this factor and this factor, this is how I weighted it. This is how I voted and I'm, I'll vote based on what I can defend with my conscience and what I can defend with values and data. And, you know, no matter how wonderful of a job that I know all of you are doing to forecast and predict, it's going to be wrong. And I'm going to lay that up for people, you know? We're all people. They have done a tremendous job doing all the outreach and the right things that they should do. And I will defend them and the, the work that they did, no matter what happens afterwards, because this is the point in time where we're at. And I, if, even if I, you know, if, if we voted and I voted against something or I voted for something, when we move forward, it just needs to be about how we can defend it and then being respectful to one another. So that's what I'm going to look.
Other comments or questions? I think we're there. I'd like to thank everybody. Thank the people in the audience and staff and board members. So see you in a couple of weeks.